Alright, good afternoon. Uh, it is one o'clock. I'll just ask the members of council if they could just put their cameras on so we can ensure attendance for the record. Looks like we got a full complement of council. Welcome here. So before I begin with the meeting, I would like to acknowledge the traditional territories of the Coast Salish peoples. And in particular, acknowledge our relationships with the Kesi, Kwantlin, Masque and Semiamo First Nations. With that, I'll bring the regular meeting of Township of Langley Council to order. And the first item is the adoption and receipt of the agenda items. Could I have a motion, please?
So move Ferguson.
Counsel Ferguson moves it, second by Counsel Arneson. Uh, all those in favor? Posed and carries. Thank you. Next, uh, motion is for the minutes for the regular council meeting February the twenty-second. Could I have a motion, please?
I'll move.
Counsel Whitmarsh and a seconder.
Long.
Counsel Long. Any errors or omissions? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed and that carries. Thank you. We have two delegations and we'll begin with Mr. Brian Miller. And, uh, Mr. Miller, you'll have five minutes to present and we will. I'll ask the clerk to get you up and running. So, welcome here.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, nice. Sorry, just one second. I didn't realize it was starting so quick here. Did you guys get a chance to get the document I sent across?
Yes, I understand it's in our, it was in our distribution.
Okay.
I do have it here. I have it in front of me.
Okay, I don't. Alright, I don't have a split screen, so I will have to, uh, you'll have to just review it afterwards. There's a little more detail on it. Um, so basically what I've been doing for the last.
Just, just, just before you start, I'll just let counsel know that it's in today's distribution. And it's, uh, the first item. And it begins on page, I guess it's right after the. On page one. There you go. So, uh, thank you. I just want to make sure counsel could follow along. Thanks. Okay, I'll let you start again.
Yeah, so my name is Brian Miller and, uh, I started a little community group called Community, uh, Your Local Community. And the basis for me starting it was, um, I've been coming out, I've been part of Langley since nineteen eighty-nine. My parents divorced. I grew up in Burnaby and my, my dad moved out to Langley and, uh, he started his second family out here and I had three half brothers that grew up and lived out here. And so Langley has kind of always been a different place than I've ever known. It's been a town. It's been a, you know, like the background of the mayor there. It's been, it had that feel with a city and it, or a little community and then it had a farmland and a little community. Now it's changed and, uh, I moved out here when I wanted to buy a home in two thousand and five and I left Burnaby. I didn't like Burnaby then back in two thousand and five because it was turning into something that was not what I felt to be a community that I wanted to be part of and grow part of. So, I got busy with life like we all do and, uh, really you don't see anything because you're running. But, uh, what happened about two years ago is I started slowing down. Me and my wife decided to spend the time to just be with our kids. And just focus on being parents and, uh, that's what we did. Walk into school every day and back. What I noticed was litter everywhere. And I cleaned it like the old men who wear the busy vest or a lot of other people, women, men, everyone who volunteers to clean up their streets. During COVID, I decided it was not going to be adequate to continue this. This is not a solution to a problem. That is just one or two people or a group of people who are just combating, picking litter to make, do their part for their community. And what I started to look into was solutions, solutions to these problems from the deterioration of our town turning into a city. And that's really what we are. We're a town, town solutions for now city problems. I worked in Surrey from two thousand and eight to two thousand and fifteen and police officers would often tell me, hey, Brian, you know what the difference between one seventy-six is? Well, once you cross the line into Surrey, all you hear is sirens at night. And the cops who work on the other side, you know what they hear? Crickets. You know what the same officer told me just a couple of months ago? Hey, Brian, you know what the difference is between Surrey and Langley now? I said, what's that? Said at least they both have sirens, but one side you can sneak in a coffee break between siren calls. And I'm not saying that out of fun and I'm not trying to say that out of like sarcasm. I'm saying it's an issue that we're going to have to start to face. But one of the areas that really bugs me, and I'd just like to give you a metaphor for a second. If you have a piece of paper or a pen or just use your imagination, draw a heart for a second. And in that heart, draw peoples that you love or an animal or whatever that you love. You love wine, write wine in the middle, something you love in the middle of that heart. Now take a pen and just start drawing a few lines through it. And then look at the heart again and look at what you love. What, you notice the lines, you don't like it. Now take your pen and scribble all over. Well, that's what graffiti is to our communities. It's a deterrent. It takes away some of the niceness of our communities. It shows its ugly head for a few to find a way to cause problems. Litter is the same. It just makes our community look horrible. It's a bottom-up approach. We've got to start finding new solutions to solve. So, I guess what my point is, is that, um, Langley, I think twenty years ago, we had different problems and now we have city problems and we have to find new solutions. So for myself, I've been volunteering and trying to get other people involved by taking the one-hour challenge. And while I go out and clean graffiti, I'll clean it one day. Two weeks later, I go to the same area to do some more cleaning and the same spots are re-tagged. Now, I'll do it once. You could go out and try it yourself. You go back a couple of weeks later, you clean it again. You're like, oh. You go back a third time. You're like, alright, that's it. This is not going to be the next thirty-five years of my life. We have to find a solution. So I talked to some hardware stores. I talked to some strata complexes and they said graffiti, got to get rid of the easy access to spray paint. Lot, some places have done it, not many, but it's a bold move. So I asked you guys to make a bylaw. Eighteen years and younger, you gotta have ID to buy it. You can't buy it if you're a minor. You've got to get your parents to help you buy it. And we lock it up behind a cage. So if you want to steal it, it's harder to do so. It's not going to solve the problem, but it'll make a twenty to thirty percent reduction in access. Which if you go get a compounding rate on that, it gives anywhere from like a ninety to a hundred and twenty percent return. Meaning that if we just continue with our same efforts we're doing today to tackle graffiti and litter, at least this with graffiti, um, you're going to get a reduction of a massive reduction in results in three years to our community. Now if we add in business, government, community and builds new programs, we can actually really make our communities better. So, I believe, you know, the township is a gem in it. We're the birthplace of British Columbia and I truly believe it's where great things begin. So I challenge and ask everyone to work together with your local community. And let's start finding new solutions to these problems, bold ones. Because in eighteen months, we're all going to get asked these questions. Are our communities better than they were five years ago? Are we safer? Are we cleaner? Do we have better infrastructure, better schools? Are we a better community or are we not? And I think in the next eighteen months, we can prove that the best is coming ahead. So I would love to extend in all the branch to work together and ask you guys to put this bylaw into action, um, and we'll see what we can do. So if there's any questions, I'll take it there and uh, review the proposal and check out the website and sign up if you have any.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, do you have, uh, do you know of other jurisdictions that have enacted some of the bylaws?
A lot of states have in the United States of America and there's a couple, uh, cities that have across Canada. Um, I, I, again, my computer's not open with the areas. I, I can send you a list of all the areas, but yes, it's, it is, it does happen in the statistics, but it's not a common one. But Michael's craft store, just to give a shout out to Michael's, they already do this on their own free will because they had such theft and they don't like seeing the building, it's a real can building would get stuff stolen. And then the same building would get spray painted. So they locked it up to make sure it was harder. And actually the strata manager is my uncle there. And he said it made a drastic difference just on that building.
Thank you. I have several counselors with questions. Counsel Richter.
Yeah, what a great idea. Thank you very much. And, uh, I actually, the mayor beat me to the question because I was going to ask if, uh, any of our neighboring municipalities did it. Um, the other question that I had for you is you say that you've talked to some of the, um, the stores that sell this paint. Do, would they be receptive to a restrictive bylaw? Because that's basically what you're asking for us to do. And I think it's worth a try, absolutely. And in fact, uh, we, um, would need to refer your delegation to staff at the end of the meeting and I'm, I'm definitely going to do that. Uh, but I'm just wondering how stores would react to it. Would they see this as an infringement on their right to do business?
Now, I've spoken openly with the owner of a couple of hardware stores, local, smaller ones. And they're on board. They're staying behind counters. They're on board. Obviously it's a little bit of an investment to them, but they also admit that it's mainly from theft. And actually the day that I spoke to one local hardware store, it's right near a high, by a high school. He said he caught some kids, high school kids the day before stuffing a backpack with like twenty cans in it. And then he walked around the corner and said, hey, what are you doing? And then, and then I came in the next day and then I asked him and he laughed. He's like, yeah, he's like, obviously they don't, it's such a minor amount of money that gets sold to people who are probably going to possibly do vandalism. Most people who do vandalism don't purchase, they steal. But I would say that unfortunately, if we want to see, I don't know when's the last time you guys drove out to Abbotsford and looked along the highway near Sumas exit or the last time you went through Surrey. I worked in Newton Surrey for seven years. I seen New- Newton Surrey go from bad to terrible. And I'm only stressing, and that's why I started this Your Local Community, as someone who says, I'm either going to flee Langley or I'm going to watch Lang, stay here and watch and do nothing and watch Langley turn into that. It's coming. And I think we need to put up a law and say, no, and this is your watch. You're the caretakers right now. You're the elected caretakers of Langley. It's been around since eighteen twenty-seven. The Slowho and the European settlers came, they formed a community, they made things work, they built, they went through hard times. And we developed into where we are today and B C is where it is today because of Langley. So, I think we have an, I think we have an obligation to not ask, but to do. And we need to do bold things or else we're going to watch, I don't know, drive around, look at all your areas and take.
Okay, we'll, we'll get to the next question. You're giving your report again.
More thing, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I want to thank this, uh, person for coming and speaking to us today. Certainly, Mr. Miller, you've got some excellent ideas. And I hope that you will consider running for council in eighteen months because we need ideas like yours here. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Kunst.
Yeah, I was, uh, some of my questions have been answered, um, but I just wanted to say thank you. I love your passion and I'm very passionate about Langley as well. And would love to entertain, um, you know, what this might look like as far as, you know, um, how, I guess the question would be, how do we enforce the bylaw? That's always a big one, but, um, uh, yeah, I appreciate you coming and, uh, sharing your, um, your experience with graffiti. Um, one question, do you, is there areas that are more prone to graffiti in Langley that you know of that, um, that you've witnessed?
Well, unfortunately, what you're going to find in Langley, if you actually look at it from like a thing, you're going to notice that the congestion in Willoughby that we built is going to cause a lot of youth to have idle time and idle hands because Langley's never been a thing with a lot of things to do. There's for youth. And you're going to find, especially I found in Fort Langley over the last pandemic, especially over the summer, um, the graffiti is amplified. I mean, I'm talking like everywhere now. And I go out, I just spent two days last week spending sixteen hours cleaning graffiti in my community. And it, the solutions will, you know, bylaw solutions and finding solutions to it. Well, that's, that's, that's going to be, I just think this is a, this is the day where we open the dialogue and then we set up a meeting to find some times. And I think you have to include business. So we asked the hardware stores managers to come talk. We asked some paint stores. We asked some local businesses. We asked some strata managers. We have some council members volunteer. And we form a committee with your local community members and you guys, and we form and we find a solution. But this is just to get the conversation started. But I'll tell you, if we do nothing, I think everyone, we all agree.
Graffiti drives me crazy. So anyway, thank you for coming. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Uh, Counsel Arneson.
Uh, thank you, worship, and thank you very much, Mr. Smith, for coming today. I do appreciate, uh, the fact we'd had actually a fairly lengthy conversation and I do recognize as others do your passion for the situation. I, I did wonder and further to your reflection about the idle time that has been on some individuals' hands. And I know you're talking about something that's very specifically targeting the use of spray paint. However, I am kind of wondering if we're looking outside of the box. I think some communities have actually done something very creative where they've taken individuals, not who just want to tag something, but people who actually use spray paint for an artistic purpose and they create an area where they can actually do that. So I, I just want to put that out there as an opportunity that maybe the township could have some influence on because I think that some of those projects have been very, uh, successful in the communities that they had. But I, I do want to go back to, to this eradication of graffiti because I think it's not arguable that the more you have graffiti and allow it to linger, the more you're going to get. Because it, it's like litter. Once you see one piece, it starts to collect more and then there is a general degrading of what the community standard is. So, um, you know, I would be supportive of looking into this bylaw. Uh, and I do understand why the businesses would like it if they're able to lock away, um, their materials. But I also would like it to perhaps broaden to some of the other things that, uh, we could be doing because I know that in addition to that, that the litter is a big issue. So, um, I think that those things could maybe be bundled up in some way that we could, uh, work together on. So, thank you again for coming.
Yeah, thank you. And I, and I do just want to say, I agree. I think the skate park initiative, it's called us Spray Your Park. And it would be, uh, at skate parks, especially skateboard parks are popular areas to build. And you build big concrete walls and you've got a big sign up that says Spray Your Park, Not Your Community. And I think that's a great initiative. By the way, it's what you recommended. I think that is part of the solution is to give areas and promote it in that spot.
Thank you. Counsel Ferguson.
Yeah, well, thank you for coming today, Brian. And guys like, people like yourself, you're like my hero because, uh, some people like, um, to go to expensive restaurants. I like to watch the people like yourself, um, getting out and make a difference in the community. Um, uh, I haven't had a chance to talk to you too much. We had a death in the family, but I know that you and I have corresponded by either text message or email. Um, the, my first question is, have you been in touch with the business side with the Adopt the Street or Park program, those folks? That's my first question.
I put in two phone calls to Levine and I haven't heard, well, a call back. I put in a, two phone calls to the bylaw office and I haven't heard a call back. Um, I was pretty much directed that, uh, my initiative would be best suited to be discussed amongst you guys. Um, I will say that I just had a great conversation with an Adopt the Street guy and also in my proposal, if you read the, uh, thing I sent. The Adopt Street program, I think what needs to happen is you have these old programs and we need to make them new. One of the things that's very interesting about your Adopt Street program is I asked when I was talking to one of the clerks, when was the last time you cross-referenced to see if anyone who adopted a street lives in Langley anymore? And the answer was, we haven't.
Okay, well, that's, that's something, that's number one. We've got to clean that up and you're right, we've got to improve that program. I'm a member of the Adopt the Street, but I also, as I said to you, either a text message or email, I, you drove by my house right now. I've got a four-by-eight, the utility trailer is full of stuff and the larger items. And sometimes, you know, the citizens, they don't want to take the larger items to the, um, mat landfill. Because mattresses, you get charged about fifteen or twenty dollars for them. I don't mind paying out of my own pocket because it, uh, it's like a community, um, you know, citizen. I like to do that, like yourself. Um, but you need supplies, you need pickup handles, you need bags, you need, uh, stuff because I'm getting that graffiti, getting your graffiti off the walls is really tough. And, uh, it's really, it's, it's the paint and everything. You need special stuff. Um, and when I was a teacher, um, the problem, I used to get these kids out picking up, uh, garbage cigarette butts were always a problem. But anyway, I see people like yourself going out, uh, doing, doing your thing, volunteering and that's all important. Um, the taggers, I'm talking about the people that do graffiti. You're right about the fact that, uh, uh, as a teacher, I had a bunch of taggers that are members of my, uh, program. So I used to talk to them about ways we could tag or use their artistic skills without ruining the community. We talked a lot about that. And we had a program within the schools to help that. That doesn't solve every problem. It's one more step. So, let's work together. Let's, um, the bylaw, we can look at that, see how it works or whether it's, whether it would solve enough problems. I don't know. But, um, you know, those, that's the direction I think, you know, that we can work to help you. And also get the ob- obviously, um, you know, the idea out to more volunteer, volunteers and things like that. Because, you know, a program like yours and ours, we need people to be active. Does that make any sense?
Yeah, I think that's, that's good. Yeah. So we'll, we'll, um, I think if there's a motion coming forward, we'll, all those will, uh, be added in. Thank you. Counsel Davis.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Jackie, the mayor refers, okay. You, you stole my thunder because I'm looking at Mayor Froze, um, Brian, and all I can think about is I went back in time. I would go and argue with the local farmers that own that farm right there, Chup and, uh, Bill's still alive. And that made me think, the changes, you talked about changes. Changes, uh, from, we, we all see changes. Um, and, and no matter what you do, Brian, you know, you came to Langley because it was a journey and out to, and it was farmland and, and things, but cha- cha- things are going to change. They change and I, I don't like, I don't like the change either, but, um, uh, when, you know, I looked, uh, well, counselors have talked about high schools. Up at, um, up at the high school where my kids play soccer, they have a thing there where every two weeks or three weeks they paint it. And they have, they, I don't know how they do it, but they get three or four, I've seen them, three or four guys there. They got bucketfuls of paint and they do a beautiful job and I can't understand. And like, if I sit and march a train, uh, the graffiti that goes through on a train. So, is unbelievable. I don't know how they do it. I, I, they, where do they find the time to sit there and make such a beautiful thing? When nobody comes along and stops them from doing it. Um, I'm concerned. I think that we can, uh, country lumber. I go up there and get my paints. And, um, you know, I go to Otter Quap and they, they lock up poison, rat poison. And there's certain key areas that I think, but all of a sudden I think, well, so we're going to lock up paint in a certain drugstore or a, or a hardware store. But now it's like kids, kids, I shouldn't say that. Well, it's like cigarettes. If you can't get cigarettes, you get them somewhere, right? And, um, but it's absolutely worthy looking into. Uh, Abbotsford has become horrible. And I don't mean that disrespectful, but if you drive down the freeway, I've said to my wife many times, look at the garbage and it's, it's, uh, it can pile up. And when I was in Fort Langley Junior Secondary, I was always bad and the principal always gave me the task for the day at lunch to go pick up garbage. I know how to pick up garbage and it's unbelievable how some people just throw their garbage out and, and you have to pick it up. It's, it's a problem. When you start to get more people, you get more garbage. And, uh, you know, with Willoughby here, I've noticed many times trucks come down and they'll dump a load of chip rock. And it, nothing bugs me worse. So I absolutely support doing something and I think it has to be studied. Okay, I'm going on. Yeah, but thank you for coming. That's, that's, uh, that's something that we can solve and things always look better when.
Thanks. We'll, we'll move on to the next, uh, because we're running out of time. So just, uh, some questions. We'll go on to Counsel Whitmarsh and then Long and then Richter as a follow-up. Counsel Whitmarsh.
Yeah, thank you. Um, great, uh, great presentation and, uh, I think it's really an exciting, um, idea that you have and you certainly bring with a lot of passion, which is great. Um, I'm just wondering, um, my question was, uh, I, I read the article about, uh, this story in January. I know that the Alter Grove Star, I think, featured it. Uh, your story, maybe other local papers did. I'm, I'm wondering, um, the, your, the, your local community, is that, is that you, an organization that you yourself have started, Brian? Or is that a part of another organization or how does, what's the, uh, how does that fit into what you're doing?
So what it is, is I joined another community group, local, in March, um, because I felt like I needed to give back, right? Um, a lot was going on and it was not an action-based, it was a gather-based. So one that you, you gather information and you send it off to you guys. And I'm an action-based, result-oriented person. I believe if you're not willing, you know, action speaks louder than words. And what I saw was things that needed immediate action and to get results. And it wasn't happening. And I figured that the best way to do it was to put my money where my mouth was and invest my own money. Like you said, someone said it costs a little bit of money to buy graffiti remover and garbage dumping. There's, there's solutions to every one of these problems. So your local community was founded, it's myself who started it. I have a couple of friends who are involved in different levels of government, not, not locally in different areas and they, they're implementing it. And it's just a thing that I wanted to just, it's, it's to put myself out there to say like, let's see what we, I can do without making money. I usually do things to make money. This is me to do things to see if I can make things better without making money, but for the purpose. Self-purpose, community purpose, community involvement, giving back. And what the, I guess what I just want to leave it here is your local community, it's a foundation base. So this is the foundation. Right now, we have deterioration in our communities. We need to fix that first. Once we fix the base and we get the heart back where you see what you love inside of it again clearly, now we start working on the next areas. That's the problem, that's the solution.
Yeah. So the question was if this is new. So you've set this one up. So that's good. Thanks. So that's your question, Counsel. Thank you. Counsel Long.
Yeah, thanks a lot. Yeah, well, I guess whatever's motivating you is, is, is an interesting question, but I, I don't need a response from you so much, Mr. Miller, but I'd just like you to know that the Adopt the Street program has been around for years. If it's not working correctly, we need to do something about it. We don't have to invent a new one. We don't have to reboot, reboot the whole thing. I think what, what has to happen is we need to be accountable with the Adopt the Street. That's number one. Number two, litter's been around since the beginning of time. Somebody else said more people, more litter. Graffiti's been around since Egyptian times as well. So there's, there's, it's nothing we're going to be able to really do to stop. But we do have a zero tolerance policy. From my understanding, if you check with, with our staff, we can confirm that, that if there is graffiti on a building or anywhere in the township of Langley, you should be able to phone and it should be able to be addressed. The number one way to get rid of graffiti is to take it away immediately. The longer it's there, then it becomes an art form in some respects. And that might be why it gets replaced when it's, when it's left for too long. But we take it down immediately. And if, if you're not getting a response on that, we can help in that respect. It already exists. As far as banning, uh, spray paint, I don't think I can, I can support that. I don't think it's worked in other communities. I've, I've checked, uh, with others because it did come up at U B C M many years ago. It came up at L M L G A. And quite frankly, some of the most prolific taggers are over the age of eighteen. So I don't know if, if that's really going to work. But I don't want to discourage. I'm just going to finish because we've been on this for quite a while. I think what you need to do, if you see graffiti, phone it in. If you see litter and you're not satisfied with the way the Adopt the Streets working, call it in. Uh, and if you want to put a crew together and pick up garbage, I've done it many times. My neighbors do it. There are other groups that are doing it. Great supply with the pickers and the bags and so forth. Uh, we'll work with you on it for sure, but I don't know if reinventing the wheel is going to help or banning spray paint. So just let you know that's where I'm coming from. But thanks for coming. Appreciate it.
Well, I will say that there's two generational ages of solving problems. The new.
Yeah, so, so we're going to move on. We have, yeah, we have to, we have to move on.
Leave it here because he did say quite a bit of slander, in my opinion, about, or at least.
Excuse me, we're going to move on. I have another question from Counsel Richter. So.
Okay, for sure.
Counsel Richter, go ahead, please.
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, I was wondering if you would entertain a motion now to refer this delegation to staff for a report because I would like to see this idea move forward.
Sure. We'll, we'll do it in other business, I think, like we normally do and we'll just carry with, uh, on their normal process. But I think it's very clear to the, to the delegate that, uh, there will be something, we're going to get some more information. He's raised some very good points and, uh, we want to make sure that the system works. And Counsel Long raised some good points that we did have a, uh, I, I remember in years past, this has come up and and there was a, a group that would go out and, and take care of the graffiti, whether that's still working and functioning as the way it did in that time. I think we need to find out, but perhaps in other business, we can, we can do that and.
Okay, well, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm going to bring that motion forward under other business time. Thank you.
Thank you. And Counsel Ferguson, do you have something to wrap, wrap this up with?
Well, yeah, I just, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I just want to repeat what Counsel, um, Richter said as well.
We'll do another business.
But I want Mr. Miller to hear this. Mr. Miller, you're going to be hearing from the Adopt the Street program. Or else I want you coming to my house because we need, we need to get together and I don't like people not returning your calls. Okay, Mr. Miller? You're going to be hearing from them. Thank you.
We'll look into it. Okay. Well, thank you very much, very much, Mr. Miller, for your delegation. And it looks like, uh, council has, has heard you and, and will want to get some, uh, look into it further. So thank you very much for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then we'll move on to the next delegation. Uh, Kathy Peters.
Uh, thank you, your worship. I presume everybody can hear me.
Yes, you're, you're on. Thank you very much.
Today is International Women's Day and it is Stop the Sexual Exploitation of Children and Youth Awareness Week. Human sex trafficking and sexual exploitation for the purpose of prostitution is the fastest growing crime in the world and it is here. So what is human trafficking? It is recruiting, transporting, transferring, receiving, holding, concealing, harboring or exercising control over a person for the purpose of exploiting them. The key word here is exploitation. This is modern-day slavery. Here are some stats. Thirteen years old is the average age of recruitment into the sex industry. It's much younger for indigenous girls. Fifty-four percent are indigenous. They are severely overrepresented in the sex industry and it's up to about eighty percent in the downtown east side. Eighty-two percent, and this is shocking, involved in prostitution had childhood sexual abuse incest, which is preparation for prostitution later on. Seventy-two percent live with PTSD, so trauma needs to be addressed. Ninety-five percent in prostitution want to leave, so it is not a choice. It is not. want to leave, so it is not a choice. It is not a job. Eighty-six percent have housing needs, so homelessness makes them vulnerable. Eighty-two percent need drug rehabilitation because drugs and the sex industry go together. So I've been raising awareness about sexual exploitation and specifically child sexual exploitation and trafficking to every city council, MLA, MP, and police agency in British Columbia since the Protection of Communities and Exploited Persons Act became federal law in two thousand fourteen. So the police would enforce it, so the public would understand it and be able to report it. So the law has three parts. Number one, it targets the demand by targeting the buyer of sex. So the predator, the trafficker, pimp, facilitator, John, buyer of sex are criminalized. Number two, recognizes a seller of sex as a victim, usually female, and is not criminalized. Number three, there's supposed to be exit strategies in place to help the victim out of the sex trade. We're not doing any of these things very well here in BC. But the law focuses on the source of the harm, the buyers of sex and the profiteers. The clear statement from Parliament was that girls and women are not for sale. Here's my RCMP poster, that they are full human beings with dignity and human rights. Vancouver and Toronto are global sex tourism hotspots. Canada is now known, and this is shocking, as a child sex tourism destination. The sex industry is growing fast. It's targeting our children because children is where the money is, fueled by the internet where most of the luring is taking place. Contributing factors are globalization, unregulated technology, limited law enforcement, and very little prevention education. I do prevention education. Canada has a brand new national human trafficking hotline number. I did send a wallet card to all of you to see that. And provincially, we have OC tip, uh, which has a helpline number. Pornography is fueling the sex industry and creating the market for commercially paid sex. Men and boys are the buyers of sex and are the key to end exploitation. Boys and men must understand that there's a safe, I got this line from the Vancouver Police Department. They must understand there's a sacred part of the woman they have no right to. And I just shared that with the BC Indigenous Chiefs two weeks ago and Federal Justice Minister David Lametti. So what can you do as a township? First of all, train your business licensing managers what to look for when granting business licenses. So unregistered massage and body rub parlors, nail spas, holistic health centers, day spas, modeling agencies, tattoo parlors, escort services, cheap bars and hotels, men's clubs, Airbnb, VRBO, casinos, strip clubs, organized crime clubhouses can all be typical covers for sex trafficking and exploitation. Regarding hotels and motels, what they're doing now in Ontario, and they are best practices globally to curb trafficking, is they actually mandate registration of every guest who is in a motel or hotel room. So my point is, BC is getting further and further behind all provinces in Canada in both enforcing the federal law and raising awareness with prevention education. Therefore, BC is now the best place in Canada to buy and sell women and children for sex. Public awareness in BC is completely lacking. The media has a pro-sex industry narrative, making it very difficult to counter. That is why I have sent packages to every city council in BC to warn you all of this rapidly growing crime. And don't forget, we share a border with the United States. When that border opens, Americans come up here to buy sex. So um I was wondering if I could present to your law enforcement and to any of your community safety committees. Also, could you please alert the premier and solicitor general that this crime is a priority in BC and needs funding for provincial law enforcement and the a provincial awareness campaign? We also need an interagency human sex trafficking task force, similar for drugs and gangs. And I'd love a letter of support, but just so you know, I work very closely with RCMP headquarters, all RCMP detachments, and very closely with VPD, VicPD, et cetera. Any questions? And thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Counselor, I have several questions. Counselor Kunst, if we could limit to questions only to counsel, thank you.
Thank you so much for bringing awareness to this very, very important um, yeah, topic. Um, do you know um what kind of response you've been getting from your the different delegations that you've been doing?
Um, everybody's in shock. Like I just last week, I did Comox, Houston, Cache Creek. Today, I'm doing the township, City of Langley, and then Callwood. So I've got a lot of city councils that are asking for delegations now all over BC. I have really focused on the lower mainland, but I can do Zoom now. So generally, it's shock. Generally, it's what Shirley Bond told me because I'm in touch with um the MLAs as well. She said there's no public awareness. There is no public awareness. So I watch counselors just sitting there with their mouths open. There's just no public awareness.
Yeah, because we think it's happening in other countries, but it's happening in our backyards. So yeah, thank you again for bringing that forward to us.
Uh, Counsel Arneson?
Uh, thank you, worship, and thank you for coming today as a delegate, especially on International Women's Day. Um, I had a question regarding the internet and the degree to which this is becoming a more or less of a Wild West situations where there's nobody that is going to be able to enforce. So I just wondered if you had any information regarding who in particular would it be the government in terms of communications and that overview of what's happening online? Because I know that's a large part of the problem.
Well, just so you all know, I mean, Minister David Lametti now knows me quite well. Sort of every MP in Canada has heard from me. So it is at a federal level, definitely, in dealing with technology. I mean, globally, technology is not regulated. I mean, we're talking now big tech, big tech. And you probably all have heard of Pornhub, MindGeek out of Montreal. Well, that's the Americans now that are charging Pornhub, which is in Canada. So it really is a global issue, but it's also a national issue. So I do work with federal MPs on this, but every level of government, we all need to work together and collaborate.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Richter?
Yeah, I was just wondering, have you reached out to some of the community groups? For example, Seroptimists here in Langley um did run a a series of awareness campaigns targeted at young women and their mothers. And I, of course, took my daughter to one of them. But um, it seems to me that this has not decreased. It's only increased. It is a clear and present danger. And the community groups that have been working on this, at least here in Langley, I think have been doing very effective awareness campaigns.
I I certainly agree with you. And if there's any group that you could introduce me to, I I speak for free. I I sit here in my condo and do Zoom meetings all day long. So um, yes, Seroptimists, they do a great job, but it still is, it's the problem is media. The me, for example, I contacted CKMW regularly, Vancouver Sun Province. I mean, they're just not writing any pieces on prevention education. I'm so shocked. And I do present regularly to the indigenous. They are losing their girls because the sex traffickers are targeting them specifically. Um, and and they're also now targeting good families. You know, girls now, I'm sorry, church families, Christian girls that are nice, I'm suspecting they're being targeted. I mean, our I've said to Mike Farmworth, our communities are not fit or safe for children.
Yep. Okay. Well, I'll definitely uh see if I can get in touch with the Seroptimists and and pass some your name along to them because I I think that you could work with them definitely. And certainly, thank you for bringing this to our attention again.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Whitmarsh?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, great presentation and breaking this aware, bringing awareness to us. Um, I think we're, many of us are uh hear the words and hear about it, but we don't really understand fully how it's involved in our own communities and our own country. Um, my question is actually similar to the the delegate that that came on before you, and that is, um, I noticed you that you have an organization called Be Amazing Campaign. Is it is this your organization that you've started and is it a an association, an organization? Just how would you say that this is structured and what what is it about?
Well, there's my pamphlet. No, I'm just, I'm an educator. I'm just a private citizen doing this. I am not creating an NGO. I don't fundraise. I'm just a private citizen doing. I've been working on this for over forty years. So I'm just a voice. And um, I work with a lot of different groups and certainly I work very closely with law enforcement, for example, but I work with all three levels of government. But you know what? I'll be frank with you. I think I'm more effective as a private citizen. I've been told that many times, especially by law enforcement. When you're a private citizen, it's amazing, the voice of one, I guess, makes a difference.
Right. So Be Amazing Campaign, that's your organization that you've started? Great.
Correct. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you so much for bringing this to our to our attention. Appreciate it.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Peters. It's uh certainly very topical. I know it's been uh through different committees I've been on, the Healthy Community Partnership has been brought to our attention and it's been a lot of great people like you who are advocating for more awareness and and uh more government support in in stopping this and certainly uh very timely. So thank you very much for your presentation. Okay. All right. So we'll move on to reports to counsel and uh begin with E one. This is the development, a development variance permit application for Telegraph Show Properties Limited. And if I could have a motion from counsel, please.
A move.
Counselor Long moves it and a second. Counselor Whitmarsh, uh, Counselor Richter?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm not supporting this. I um don't think the setbacks should be reduced as extensively as they're being reduced. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no further discussion. So I'll call the question. All those in favor? And opposed? Counselor Richter opposed. A motion carries. Thank you. I'll move on to E two. This is heritage alteration permit application uh for Bowman on Odeon Road. Could I have a motion, please? Counsel Arneson and a second.
Ferguson.
Counsel Ferguson and Counselor Richter?
I'm sorry, I didn't take my hand out from the last.
Before.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't see any discussion. Oh, Counselor Whitmarsh?
Sorry, just a a quick question. I know this came to counsel uh before, uh, but through through your worship, I'm wondering if we would have some explanation from staff as to why uh this was not um dealt with the first time it came around and why this is this uh HAP has lapsed?
Oh, that's Mr. Seffy. Seffy, do you have any background information? Not sure if your audio is working, Mr. Seffy. We're not hearing you. I do see that you are unmuted, so it could be a setting. Mr. Back on my.
Your worship, well, Mr. Seffy gets things sorted out. Uh, primarily, the reason it's here is the um the preliminary approval letter has expired due to a fluctuation of time. So they're bringing it back. Um, I think it was in part economics and just in part the events of the last year and a half or so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'll call the question. All those in favor? And opposed? It carries. Thank you. Here's you know. Move to E three. This is development permit application number one zero one one seven seven, Foundation Properties, uh, of one ninety two zero block of Eightieth Avenue. Could I have a motion, please? Counselor Whitmarsh, second. Counselor Davis seconds. Uh, Counselor Richter?
Um, yes, Mr. Mayor. Um, after discussion, I would like to move a motion that we defer this for a public input meeting. I think this is far too significant a change. Uh, we're basically going from a fifty foot high building to a hundred and sixty-seven foot high building, uh, which the public has had no input on. And I think the public needs to have input on items of this magnitude. So I would like to move that deferral, but I'll wait till everyone has a chance to speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Worship, may I just test my microphone?
Yes, uh, we hear you loud and clear now, Mrs.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Uh, Counselor Whitmarsh?
Yes, thank you. Um, so I just had a couple of questions uh through through your worship to staff. Um, the the first question I had is uh, um, what is the um plans or do we know what the plans are for the rest of the land in the uh that remaining lands in C forty-nine? Um, it looks like this development would take up about uh maybe a quarter or a third of the land that's there. There's about another half that's still available. I'm wondering what the long term plan is for the rest of C forty-nine?
Mrs. Seffy?
So, thank you, your worship. I apologize for the uh, the reason wasn't working earlier. Worship, we don't have specific information, but just to, I guess, remind counsel, this is a development permit application at this point. The land was zoned uh in two thousand and one, actually, when the interchange was constructed. The more recent activity on this site was the subdivision that you see on the screen, your worship, that occurred in uh, it was two thousand and eighteen, which resulted in the subject parcel being severed from the remainder to the southeast, uh, which is now formed to, I believe, is First West. So this particular site, they said was rezoned and is now in the development permit process. For the remainder of the site is concerned, they are designated in the uh, the cover up plan for Gateway, which includes uh mixed use and mixed employment generating development.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. I had one other question and and that was um, any uh have we received any feedback from First West Credit Union? Uh, that's a fairly new uh building and it's um, I think, if I remember, maybe six stories? I can't remember. And whether they've had any um input into this or concerns about the this building that'll be much larger than their own uh right beside them?
Your worship, uh, no staff has not heard any concerns from neighbors. Is also aware, staff is aware that we have the current applicant was, has been, the process of bringing this particular application forward for for a number of years and discussed that where the uh, with this thing, there's the First West.
Okay, thank you. I'm good for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Long?
Yeah, thanks. Mr. Seffy, you are cutting out there. I've nothin' to get closer to your mic. Um, okay, I I have a question regarding normally a development permit applications, we have a public hearing, of course, with COVID, we suspended those requirements, but we certainly have notified, have we not, the the neighborhood and uh if so, how many notices were sent out? And have we had any response? And would it be appropriate to allow a bit more time for some responses if we haven't uh sent out notices yet?
Your worship, I will try to get closer to uh. Yes, we do still send out notifications to the affected area residents in accordance with our procedures by law, developing the new procedures by law. And I've confirmed that this particular application resulted in two eight, eight individual notices, as well as the refusal posting in the the local media.
And have we had any responses, Mr. Seffy, through to through your worship to Mr. Seffy?
Uh, I don't believe so, your worship. I think anything that may have come in, I haven't personally seen any myself, but maybe uh Ms. Bauer can confirm. Uh, but I do know that everything that is received is typically provided to counsel as part of the distribution package anyway.
The clerk is indicating no. Yeah, okay. Uh, and then I, you know, because it is a a tall building, now, mind you, the area is 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 fairly, I wouldn't say isolated, but it there isn't a lot of residential area in the immediate vicinity. But did the proponent do a shadow study of now with this increased height? Would there be uh the requirement to do that or have they done that on their own? Is that something that's that we would be able to see if there were one, to see whether this building might create some shadow uh issues for surrounding properties?
Your worship, is that typically a requirement, in particular in nonresidential areas, to generate those types of uh renderings, according to counsel's direction? Uh, it's something that certainly can be asked for?
Yeah, I mean, that would be the concern. You know, we don't have very many over six story buildings, if any at all, at the moment. I mean, many are coming, but um, that would be certainly when you go over certain height, there are gonna be uh ramifications from that in terms of blocking sunlight and so forth. So I'd be interested in seeing that. I think that really anything over six stories should probably have some kind of a a study or some information provided for uh for counsel to consider. That's my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Arneson?
Uh, thank you, worship. And um, further to Counselor Whitmarsh's question and the response, this gateway area, I'm wondering perhaps through your worship to Mr. Seffy, if it can be described as an area where there's a range of heights that was anticipated. So, you know, where this would fall into that range if there is one. That's my question.
Mrs. Seffy?
Yeah, I'm not sure if I quite understand the question. Uh, is it? Uh, yeah, I'm not sure if I quite understand the question. Uh, there's a question through your worship to Council Arneson. Is the question, uh, what the specific uses that might be contemplated in gateway that he mentioned on?
Okay, uh, let me clarify. So, what I'm asking is similar to some of our other zoning where we have a range of heights of buildings, like four to six stories. Is this a situation in our gateway area where we've anticipated in advance what the range could be? Like 10 to 12 stories or 14 to 24, that kind of scenario is my question.
I'll have to look that up, your worship, and get back to you.
Okay, that's okay. Um, but I would appreciate knowing that because if it sort of falls into the general guidelines, that would be helpful to know. My second question, uh, through your worship to Mr. Seffy again, is the daycare parking. I know that it meets our parking requirements, but it indicated there's only four parking spots. So, I wondered if it's a cumulative amount and if that is something that is a norm for a daycare situation, only to have four parking spots?
Your worship, typically, uh, within a particular development, if there are a mix of uses, uh, what we do as part of the process is make sure compliance with the zoning by law for the entirety of the project, not specific uses within that project. Uh, not sure if that makes sense, but, but for example, if there are, say, a, a doctor's office and, uh, a diet trainers and, uh, children's daycare operator, the, the, the total requirement for those three uses would then be required to be provided, uh, for the entirety of the site. Not necessarily where they're going to be parking and whether each one on its own has been allocated sufficient park.
Okay, well, I understand that in principle, but I think in terms of a time of day, that there would have to be some consideration going forward because if you have a use that's fairly heavy at a couple of times a day with people dropping off and picking up, that might have implications for other users, uh, subsequent users on that site, but that's just my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Council Ferguson?
Yes, uh, I did want to say that, um, this particular, uh, building, and I have asked staff, but I'll ask again. It, it was, uh, the site was, uh, rezoned or zoned in 2018. That's correct, if I made through a chair. Was that? I'm not, was that June 2018, if I made through a chair?
Seffy?
Your worship, I, I don't have the month, but I can confirm it was 2018. Sorry, I don't have the actual month.
Okay, 'cause I know that a number of, if, my next question, it, they're all kind of simple questions. We don't have a, um, other than maybe the hospital or something like that. We don't have a, uh, uh, over 10-story building built in the township yet, do we, if I made through a chair?
Mr. Seffy? We, I, I know that we have.
Worshipmate, sorry, I was just trying to get a listen to your previous question. There is no maximum, sorry, there's no, yeah, there's no maximum height requirement in the, uh, in the designation. Uh, so, in answer to the question that was raised by Councilor Arneson earlier, there is a minimum requirement of no smaller than three stories because there's a intent to maintain a certain form and character and certain density. So, with that, there's a specific requirement for no less than three, three stories, but no maximum requirement.
Okay, I guess, I, yeah. So, miss, by the way, Mr. Seffy, I agree with, uh, Council Long. We, oh, ever since you've been on Zoom, you've been on and off and you're not, usually not very loud, so you might want to get that checked out. Not today, another day. But, um, I mean, I'd be looking forward to seeing a, uh, a, a larger building in the, in the right location, of course. Uh, we, I don't think we've had it yet. We've had lots of rezoning, but whether they will actually build them or not, I don't know. Um, is there, what's, what's the maximum you can build, uh, in the township under code? Uh, in some of the Willoughby, uh, is it six-story, if I made through a chair, to staff?
Mrs. Seffy, uh, we do have, uh, some approvals, I think, for up to over 30, um, story building on, um, on 200th.
Yeah, for best, though, wasn't it?
Yes, been given fourth reading, so we do have two there and one, uh, by the language. Yes, we can. You're quiet, but we can hear you.
Okay, I changed again to another, uh, another setup. Uh, hoping that it might be better. I might have to get some IT assistance.
That's much better, much better.
I think Council Ferguson's question might be referring to wood frame buildings and.
Yeah, it's wood, that's right, correct.
While previously it was six stories, currently the, the province has provided for select municipalities who may choose to opt-in, if you will, to go up to 12.
Okay.
Process of doing that, yes. But, but as far as concrete and steel is concerned, uh, I think, uh, the mayor and Council Richter responded to that with respect to the township corridor.
Thank you very much. Very good.
Thank you. Uh, Council Woodward?
Yeah, thanks. I had a couple of questions along the same line, so, um, you can confirm for me again. If it was rezoned in 2018, which, which wasn't that long ago, um, why we're looking at a variance of this magnitude? Why not rezone it to, you know, essentially what's being applied for under development permit that wouldn't require a variance of this magnitude?
Mr. Seffy?
Worship, uh, to clarify, it wasn't rezoned in 2018. It was rezoned in 2001.
Okay.
Then it, they went through a, a subdivision and development permit process in 2018.
Okay, that's good to clarify, 'cause I'm, I was looking at CD49 and, yeah, it doesn't, doesn't look like that would have been done in 2018. So, I'm glad there's subdivision that was done in 2018. So, that's good to clarify. Um, I did want to sort of ask about, you know, was there any discussion with the proponent of the additional of value being created with a variance of this magnitude from what I calculate, an additional eight floors of, uh, commercial density? Now, I, I'm not, it's not density, I'm aware of that. It's additional floor area. Um, we, but it, it does seem a bit on, to me, a bit on the extreme side to vary, uh, you know, development variance for an additional eight stories, which is, you know, right now it would be four. To add an additional eight stories seems a bit on the extreme side. Maybe you can get some clarification on why this process would be chosen versus some alternatives?
Mrs. Seffy?
Well, thank you, worship. Uh, this area in particular, worship, has been, uh, I guess, uh, not necessarily as active as, as, as other parts of Willoughby as may have been expected or anticipated in 2001 when the interchange went in. Uh, so with that, the, uh, I guess the discussions, the more recent discussions over the past three or four years with the applicant have included, I guess, the, the possibility of other, uh, contributions, but not as a requirement, but just, uh, simply potential discussion points that the applicant may have, uh, offered on their own.
Okay, but, okay, so that, then maybe I should have broken it out into two questions. So, one is that, um, so there were those discussions, but there's nothing in the report about it that I could find. Maybe I missed it?
Well, your worship, the, uh, uh, material that's included in the report and staff report is actually what's been agreed upon and what's been committed to. So, that's why there is no reference to anything beyond, beyond the typical requirements because that wasn't something that was, uh, committed to by the applicant.
Okay, so maybe we'll explore that a little further, but I, and, and again, just maybe I'll loop around. So, um, you know, when you've, when you do a variance on a development permit of an additional eight floors over four floors, um, which is pretty significant. This is not adding one or two floors to the proposal. You know, would a rezoning process not be more appropriate where maybe uh, staff would have some more tools at their disposal to explore those discussions rather than, than doing it through a variance process?
Your worship, just going back to this amenity discussion, uh, the other point that I wanted to mention was the fact that historically, or not historically, but typically, uh, over the past maybe decade or maybe just a bit longer, uh, it's only been residential developments that have, that have, uh, I guess resulted in either, uh, a complete land amendment or, or some other uh, trigger that have been the subject of more intense negotiations and discussions with respect to, uh, community amenity contributions. And as far as, uh, I guess the more appropriate process is concerned, this is typically what's been done in the past through the following past practice.
Okay, um, yeah, no, I recognize that, um, you know, maybe we've been discussing a lot of residential density. We haven't been seeing, uh, you know, 12-story office towers before, so, you know, I've, I've seen this since Thursday and I, and I recognize that others have been working on it for a very long time. I've had it for three days. Um, so I am just trying to understand if there's, you know, some way to at least start having this discussion. I mean, it's one thing to add another floor to a building at Willoughby Town Center, uh, for, uh, for a public purpose, which I, I admit there would be some logic for, but I do struggle with a, with a variance request to, um, triple the size of a building. Um, you know, with essentially no, no tangible value other than additional DCC revenue really accruing to the municipality. There's no additional tax revenue that comes from this. Um, there's some additional DCC revenue. Uh, but really, you know, creating a potentially significant amount of value for private property when, you know, I think in the long run, this is what I've been bringing up before, we don't, we don't have money uh, for ice sheets, fire halls, land we need for these things, uh, because we, we don't uh, involve proponents when we're creating civic, significant amount of value for them in private hands that the municipality, uh, doesn't benefit in the same way. And, and I think this is a pretty good example of, of an extreme example of that, when we're tripling the size of a building um, through a variance process, which I, I find a bit concerning. Uh, maybe I'll come back to that, Mr. Mayor, after other substantial. I do have one other question. I didn't see any mention of a traffic impact study in the report. Could I? Maybe I missed it? Um, I'm just wondering if, if I could get an update on that and where we're at. 'Cause it was my understanding, and I cannot be corrected, that, uh, there, when the interchange was created, there was limitations placed on the traffic volume that private property owners in the adjacent areas could place on the interchange. And if we're tripling the size of buildings, um, do we have some provision, uh, that, that if there are other mechanisms in place to control the traffic pressure that these sites may be placed on the interchange? I didn't see any mention of that in the report, so if I could get that clarified?
Your worship, uh, I don't know if there was a traffic impact study specifically for this subject application. I do know that, that, uh, as part of the, the previous subdivision, there was a traffic impact study that was completed. And I do know and I can confirm for council that every time that we have an application that is within 800 meters of a provincially controlled highway, applications are referred to the Provincial Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure, as was this application, and we, we received the, the approval of, of the Provincial Ministry of Transportation, confirming that, uh, the, I guess, that there was no exceedance of, of the, uh, traffic generated, traffic generation numbers that were anticipated at some of the zoning and, and construction of the interchange.
Okay, so I, I think, Mr. Mayor, like, I'd like to, I think, depending on the other motions that may come forward, I, I'm not gonna, I think I would like to see that report, uh, the traffic impact study before, um, looking at this. Not the, I haven't seen it. Um, I know I hear from a number of members of the community about the concern around the pressure being placed on the 200 Street interchange in the long run. Um, I'm not sure if that traffic impact study contemplated tripling the size of, uh, one or more buildings in this area, so I would, uh, like to come back when, when you think it's appropriate to just do a one-meeting deferral to give a chance for staff to distribute that traffic impact study, and I'd like to have a chance to review it and potentially discuss that with Mr. Seffy before this moves forward. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Um, just to follow up, Mrs. Seffy, I just want to get some clarification, 'cause now I'm getting a little bit confused. You, you'd, uh, mentioned to Council Arneson that the, I believe it's the committee plan or the neighborhood plan contemplates, um, buildings of this height. It doesn't have a height restriction. When it went through zoning, rezoning back in 2001, uh, that zone, I guess, only allowed for 15 meters. So, I'm, I'm just, uh, just want to give a little bit of clarity on how that whole system works, 'cause on one hand, it sounds like it's, it's contemplated for that area so that there would be in our, in our overall, overall neighborhood plan that there would be, uh, uh, it would allow for extra traffic and, and, and services and that sort of thing for building of that height. So, maybe just a little bit more explanation on this, because this is a development permit application, it's not a rezoning. And I hear Council Woodward is, is a good point there on, should this rather be a rezoning or is this appropriate place? But maybe you could just provide a little bit more clarity, 'cause, uh,
Thank you, worship. I will, I will try my best to do that. Uh, it is a little bit challenging because, your worship, we're going back 20 years. And the fact that we had, uh, three key partners involved in very intricate and, and complicated negotiation process to deliver an interchange project that involved the Ministry of Transportation, the Township Landing, and a design builder. Uh, now, the committee plan was not done. We did not have a Carval plan at that time. The Carval plan actually followed in very quick order the, uh, the creation of the interchange and, and presumably the zone, because I don't remember specifically. And it was soon after I had actually joined the Township Landing, so, uh, I wasn't in this current capacity and, and, uh, didn't have the, the thorough knowledge. Uh, so that was the reason why there may appear to be a bit of a discrepancy in the zone and the, the committee plan. What I can share with you are actually excerpts from the committee plan under the gateway category. As an example, it talks about, uh, high distinctive buildings are encouraged to mark the gateway to Landing. High-quality building design and landscaping will be required to assist in creating the gated character. And as I said before, offices and retail commercial, including hotels, breweries, distilling, uh, I guess, facilities are all, uh, identified in the, in the committee plan, as well as what I referenced earlier as being the minimum building height of three stories, a minimum building height of three stories. So, then, uh, that which, again, you have to remember, came in after the zone was created, I think provides a bit more up-to-date context as opposed to the zone itself.
Okay, that's, that's helpful. Thank you. Uh, Council Davis?
Uh, thank you very much. Um, could, uh, you know, I don't remember the timeline, but we, we had put in the Carv, Carval pla, plan, I, I, maybe about four years ago, we put in a flex zoning. Is, is this flex zoning? And it was down in that area. Um, does that, I, I'm just picking my brain, uh, which is not much there to pick, but it, it's, is there a, is there an issue with flex zoning? Does it, does it cover that area? Um, question maybe to.
Yeah, I'll ask, I think, just, um, I think that may have been when we were talking about outlet malls in that area, but Mr., Mr. Seffy, maybe you can help clarify.
Thank you, worship. Uh, you're absolutely correct, your worship. The Carval plan, uh, which was adopted at the same time or soon after the interchange was completed, uh, was, has been updated since then, and one of those updates includes what you just referenced and what Councilor, uh, Davis recalls, which was actually in response to, uh, a request from a, a proponent of of what might be loosely referred to as outlet malls. Uh, members of council who were serving in council at that time may recall there were also a number of delegations by the same proponent to council suggesting that that might be a good idea, a good, good location, appropriate location for, again, what might be referred to as an outlet mall, and as such, there is a provision made in the committee plan that does allow, uh, outlet malls. And it's not the gateway, but rather I think it's, it's got another name, uh, and, and it has some conditions attached to it. It is not the gateway area. I think it's the mixed employment area. But there are significant conditions attached because of the fact that, uh, such use would generate much higher traffic generation than, than the other, the other areas. And I can confirm, yes, it's flex employment, flex employment, and not mixed employment, flex employment too. Or not the subject land, the surrounding area.
So, that really, that, that, that doesn't have anything to do with this, then? Not really? Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you. Okay, Council Richter, I'll go back to you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm glad we've had this discussion and I can say, back in 2001, I don't think we contemplated 167-story buildings in the township. I don't think it was ever even a consideration when this.
167-foot? A, a 167-foot?
Yeah, I know, but it's still, it's a very big building at the entrance to our community. And for that reason, I think there needs to be a public input opportunity, so I would like to move a deferral of this application for a public input. Of this application for a public input meeting, uh, the results of which do be shared with council.
Hey, is there a second or? Council Davis seconded. I would just like to ask the clerk. I know we have these rules while we're under the provincial emergency about, uh, I don't know how how we can do this. We do have an alternative process, so we haven't received any, any uh. Submissions from the public on this particular one to date and it's been advertised. Uh, if we're to go forward, what would be the process, uh, Ms. Bauer? If this was to pass, I'm just trying to make sure we have all the information.
Um, my understanding is we would organize it as we do currently with public hearings. That would be, uh, the notification card is very slightly. Directing people to contact legislative services in order to get the link for the meeting. There is no ability to have the public actually come to the civic facility for the meeting. It would still have to be a virtual meeting.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, thank you. Um, Council Long.
Well, I would, I I would support a deferral to allow a little more time for council, first of all, to to consider the the issue. Some have mentioned we've only had it since Thursday, uh, and and allow perhaps more input from the public. Uh, I don't know if it has to be. Uh, completely rejigged to be a special public hearing. Um, I don't necessarily agree with that. I do. Support though a deferral for a couple of weeks. I'm not sure how you'd like to handle that. But I wanted to make a couple of comments that, uh, you know, I think, uh, that there was a lot of discussion here what happened twenty years ago. And I and I'm looking at the attachment that came with the report about the gateway. Um, sort of guidelines, I guess you can say, and it certainly anticipates larger buildings there. In fact, it mentions fifty meters. Uh, as being the maximum height, which is a hundred and sixty five feet, so maybe this is two feet too high, I'm not sure, a hundred and sixty seven. But certainly, um, smart growth is always about making the most use of the land and don't forget the jobs that are going to be created here. So I'm certainly, uh, you know, excited about this project, and I think that it it can certainly be a great benefit to the township. I'm also, uh, anyway, I don't want to digress on anything more than the, than the deferral, but I don't mind deferring it for a couple of weeks. And I would like to see that the uh, uh, the the study, um, about the sun and shade. I found that also in the, in the guidelines where it says, uh, right here, proposals. For taller buildings should include a sunshade diagram of the development and the surrounding properties to make sure that shadowing impacts. Uh, are, you know, are reduced for residential uh and open spaces around it. So perhaps. If we did delay it for a couple of weeks or for the next meeting, could staff, they did mention that they could provide that. A bit of a study, and then also we talked about traffic, but I'm not sure how you're gonna work, uh, maybe I should amend it, your worship, that. That the, that it be delayed for two weeks, but that uh for public input rather than specifying a public hearing. I'll I'll let you think on that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Council Woodward.
Yeah, thanks. I think, yeah, I I I sympathize with the the s- the staff and the COVID state of emergency. I mean, the case counts went up again, so I I'm sensitive to that, but I'm I'm also sensitive to the the degree of the variance request. Uh, in relation to page eleven, let council pull that up, uh, E three, page eleven at the bottom. Uh, public information meeting, so I think for this, for me, this one has highlighted the need to to kind of do something about this. I mean, uh, so how much longer are we gonna continue to basically suspend the public input? Um, uh, so again, it says there that it's required, but it's not required because of COVID. And and I I'm beginning to become increasingly concerned about the the sort of the de facto suspension of public input. And I and I know people can email us and contact us, but um, I think it is a bit much to expect the public to go download the staff report and. You know, s- you know, go through drawings and understand the implications of all these different items from traffic to zoning to FSR, I think. You know, and to really comment on the look of it, you know, with a drawing that's this big versus maybe something that's this big. So, you know, I I would like to find some way to get back to a normal process where people can have the input and. And if if it's good, it's good and it proceeds, and we slow things down a little bit, so I mean, like, you know, it's been twenty years, but you know, in three. I've had the report for three days, but it's a twenty year hearing now. It's a, it's a twenty years to get here. Um, it'd be nice to slow it down a little bit and bring the public along a little bit more. Um, for something like this, because I agree with Council Long's comments. I I think if we're gonna, if we need, we need jobs for people. We don't want them commuting downtown into Surrey and Burberry. Let's get jobs out here in Langley, I think, you know, but. Let's go through a process to to make sure it's done fairly and and also to consider, you know, the benefit to the private property owner versus the municipality. We've got a lot of financial pressures based upon us, and we're creating a lot of significant value, um, to look at that, and I think public input is a part of that. And and bringing the public along on these applications, simply not suspending input because of COVID. So I I would like to throw it out there that this one has highlighted for me the need to really look at this, that just becau- you know, it's required. And it's it's not being done because of COVID. Well, to me, if it's required, let's find a way to get the proponent to meet the requirement and not just simply suspend it. Especially for something uh with a variance of this magnitude.
You think I'm gonna ask the clerk to describe again the process, because there has been public input and, uh, you know, whether. I mean, sure, if council wants to ask the public again, but I don't think anybody really. We're too concerned, because we didn't hear anything, and if we do it again, we're gonna, it's gonna be the same void. Maybe somebody will pick up on it.
Mr. Mayor, if I could respond to that. I'm gonna ask Ms. Bauer just to explain a bit, because. Because I disagree with those comments. I don't like it framed that way either.
Okay, well, that's fair enough. I'm gonna ask Ms. Bauer then to clarify, so that so that maybe set, set the record straight, because.
I think the record is straight. I'm not.
No, it's not. There has been public input, and you're saying that there hasn't.
No, I'm saying the pin is required and it's not been done.
It's not required under these, under these conditions, under the provincial, um, emergency, so if it was required. I'd be stomping my feet too, saying it has to be done. It's not required, so, Ms. Bauer, if you could explain, please.
Um, unfortunately, we're at a t- a point in time where the ministerial orders prohibit us from having gatherings. Um, specifically, we've been told that municipalities cannot, uh, anyway engage in large, larger public gatherings. That includes all meetings, any public input opportunities that we would legislate, anything like that, unfortunately. Uh, it, this unfortunately has to go on until the time of the state of emergency ends and the ministerial order is repealed. In order to manage to ensure that the public does have input, we've kind of pivoted things. And made our best efforts to contact the same people who would be contacted in event of public input. Meaning the cards are still going out, the cards are still going out to the exact same people, and the cards are directing how to make public input. They can still contact staff, if the directions on how to find the report are given, and the directions on forwarding comments have been given as well. So, well, we are incredibly sensitive to public input being necessary and public input being that being valid and public input. Um, council has always ensured that public input occurs. We're kind of bound by, we can't have people come together. Uh, we're doing our best to pivot, change the situation, do our best to manage the situation. But with the ministerial order being as it is, we are kind of bound by the, by the requirements of that.
Thank you for that. Uh, Council Whitmarsh.
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, I, you know, I, I, um, I feel like that we've, you know, done, done the efforts. That we, that we were asked to do for public input, the, all the people in the area receive the cards. Um, it's, you know, it's not a residential area. There, there are some residences that are are relatively close, those twenty eight groups. I heard twenty eight anyways, have received cards and not, uh, not, no information has come back. No concerns have been expressed by the people that live in the area. Um, most of it is bordered by the freeway. And, you know, I do think us having a, a, um, sort of a, an interesting building. That is sort of a landmark kind of building at the entrance of turn, of, um, Langley is fantastic. I think it's does great for the township of Langley, and I think, you know, it makes sense. Now, uh, uh, I am open, absolutely. Um, I like the idea of of postponing this, maybe our decision today to a meeting. The next council meeting, so that council has an opportunity to look at some of the, uh, um, documents that Council Woodward has asked for. And some of the points that have been made by, uh, uh, other councillors in the meeting, so happy for that two weeks, but I'm not sure that. Uh, we need to do another mail out of another, to same, same, same twenty eight people saying, look, you got the card. We're just wanna double check just to make sure you, uh, didn't lose anything. We wanna make sure that you got the cards. We're gonna send it to you a second time. I don't think that's necessary. Uh, we are in a COVID context. I can't wait to get out of COVID, just like Council Woodward, but we're not there yet. So, um, I I I'm happy to wait for two weeks and defer it for two weeks for council to have a look at it, but I don't think we need more public. Input, we've brought, uh, asked for it and we've got nothing back.
Okay, Council Ferguson.
Yeah, certainly, this has, uh, brought back, as Mr. Seffy has said, a lot of, uh, uh, history. I mean, when they were building that, uh, exchange, which, uh, was, uh. The township of Langley had to contribute money to, which is really not something that happens very often in the province. And, uh, the single point interchange was put through, which is still problematic even till today. There was a, an awful lot of folks in the area that were, um, uh, not happy with that particular model. Uh, and yet they were going to use the land, um, for rezoning purposes, for gleaning off. Uh, I guess, gleaning off money from a potential developer in the future, and here we are today, history coming and questions being asked. And legitimate questions. Um, again, I'm concerned again from COVID and, uh, you know, I don't like the Zoom as much as some people. Uh, I understand it's something we have to do and, and it's change is is evident, and I can understand that. Um, I think that we really have to look at this seriously. I I, what I don't, also, I've already said it myself, and I've asked questions to staff. I mean, people can ask for rezoning, but they don't build it, and maybe they speculate a bit. I don't know. There's all sorts of questions we have to ask. And, uh, decisions we have to make and see what benefits the township and what doesn't. So maybe if we need more time to look at it and to do some more history and just determining what we need to do. Um, so we'll be, I, can I ask the staff one quick question? Are we able to change or add, make amendments to this particular, um, because it's a development permit? If I may, through a chair, to Mr. Seffy.
Seffy.
I'm sorry, your worship, uh, could I ask Council Ferguson to repeat the question?
Yeah, well, say I wanted, I'm gonna make up this thing. Say I wanted to add some changes, landscape changes, uh. Density changes, uh, um, parking changes, uh, I'll just make up a few. Would I be have, able to do that, or would council by vote, by by majority be able to do that? Or would it be something that can't be done under development permit application the way, and including the variance the way it's being presented, if I may?
Yes, certainly, uh, council has the prerogative, your worship, to make changes to the development permit. And make that a condition of the development permit issuance. The question will then become, is the proponent going to agree to those conditions? Uh, in other words, are they, in addition to have what has been listed, or are they, uh, sort of beyond his ability to to provide? And then he has to make a decision, is he going to continue, or is he going to come back and say, no, sorry, I can't do that? That will be the ultimate question.
Okay, thank you.
Council Richter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I guess the issue in my mind is. This is a very significant change to what was considered for that location. When the rezoning took place twenty years ago, and the rezoning took place before. There was a neighborhood plan in place. That came after the fact. We've heard that. Now, because this is the gateway to the community, we're not talking about twenty eight people. We're talking about a hundred and twenty eight thousand people. Is this what they want the gateway to their community to look like? They have a right to have a say in this, and if we were holding public hearings, they would have that right. They don't have to be next door neighbors to come in and talk to us. Anybody can come in and talk to us. I am concerned about this. I I think Councilor Long has raised some excellent points about the shade is- issues. Councilor Arneson has raised points around traffic and parking. Those are all important issues that we need to consider, because it almost looks like us not having a public. Input opportunity of some sort on this. It looks like this is being somehow snuck in under the radar. And that's not right for the gateway to our community. It's just not right. So I'm open to this motion being amended, as Councilor Long has suggested, to put it off for two weeks or a month or whatever. So that we can get the information that we need. I'm open to it being left open. So that anybody in this community who drives off on two hundred street to get to their home can have a say. In whether they want this pillar there or not, and I also think that if we're going from. Fifty feet to a hundred and sixty seven feet, there should be some sort of a community amenity applied. Which also wasn't considered twenty years ago when the rezoning was done. Like, what's it gonna cost us in extra labor costs for firefighters to go in and fight a fire in that building if one happens? What's it gonna cost us for extra enforcement and policing? Uh, you know, there's so many questions here that I think the community should have a say on. So what I'm saying is, I wanna know about community amenity fees for this thing. I think there should be one. And I actually think that Councilor Woodward probably raised a very good question with regards to. Whether this should be a rezoning or not, because the original zoning or rezoning occurred before there was a neighborhood plan. And the requirements of that neighborhood plan. So I I just wanna put it out there for council. I trust in council's collective wisdom. Um, if there's a way that we can amend this motion to give us more time to gather more data, that we need to make a well-informed decision. Then I'm very supportive of that.
It, um, certainly, I I think if we could do those in two separate motions, it's probably gonna get divided anyway. Uh, so if there is, see what this happens with this one. Either way, it, we could have a separate motion for another amendment for further information, whatever, council. Uh, Councilor Woodward.
Uh, yes, hold on here. Yeah, um, may, Mr. Mayor, if I could just have the exact motion read back. There's been quite a bit of discussion outside of a.
Yeah, it's a referral, uh, motion to refer it for, uh, for the public input. That's what we're talking about. Ms. Bauer, do you wanna?
Uh, that the item be referred for a further public input meeting?
Yeah, it's, okay, so that's, I mean, maybe the mover, maybe we do need to amend it. That does seem a little vague to me. I don't know how we're gonna hold a meeting. I think what I was focused on, uh, when I originally spoke was this, this here under page eleven, saying that. Um, has, you know, temporarily suspended the requirement for a PIM. So for me, the purpose of a PIM isn't to get a couple of feedback forms from people to then just sort of ignore them. The, or, you know, consider them and move forward anyway, let's put it that way. Um, it was to, you know, originally, it's that you, you have a PIM and people look at the application, they look at the building, they look at the design, they submit some comments. And maybe the proponent makes some changes based upon those those submissions. That that process is gone. I mean, that. Sending out yellow cards to twenty five people, uh, doesn't seem like a process to me that's befitting of a variance of this magnitude. So I'll just leave it there. I think I I don't know what I'm really voting on, defer for a public meeting when we can't have a public meeting, so. Maybe we do need to look at amending this prior to voting on it, or try again with a different version, because I don't really know what I'm voting on at this point. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, I just want to clarify, there are other means that we broadcast this to the greater communities, is that correct? Through the newspaper? Is there a newspaper, um, notification? Or is it just a mail out? Just a mail, okay, thanks. Uh, Council, okay, I gotta keep track here. Council Long.
Yeah, okay, so, yeah, it is, we seem to be going over the circles a little bit here. I'm actually not minding the idea of of. Of having public, of course, public input. Now, there is a public hearing next in two weeks. Can this not be added to that? Normally, a development permit is part of a public hearing, allowing input from the public. Uh, the, yes, we suspended them for ver- E O C ru- or requirements and so forth, but why couldn't we add this to that public hearing in two weeks? And I want, so I'd like to know if that's not in fact what we're voting on. It may not be as vague as it sounded. Should it not be, the, uh, that this be deferred to or referred to a public hearing in two weeks? Number one, and number two, the the other issues that that have been asked for by various councillors, traffic study, uh, or maybe it was to look at the traffic study, the shadowing. Uh, and some more information that we could, uh, ask proponent to to provide us before the public hearing. So can we not just put it to the public hearing?
I'll, I'll ask Ms. Bauer, she.
If so, I think I would support that. Why not?
Ms. Ms. Bauer?
At this point, we're not scheduling a public hearing for two weeks. There's, uh, no bylaws with which require O C P amendments going forward for first and second from this agenda.
Well, I still have it on my.
We, it, it would be, we would be unsc- unable to schedule it. it would be, we would be unable to schedule it for two weeks as we would not have the time to get the cards in the mail and out to people. It would have to be a month from now.
Wow. I have a public hearing in my calendar still, except I haven't
Yeah, it's because it's been put in for the year and then staff cancel it when there is nothing. So after this meeting.
But Your Worship, normally, we give first and second reading to to a rezoning, for example, then it comes forward for public hearing two weeks later.
This is a development permit.
Well, either way, we've often voted on something and then it comes to public hearing at the next meeting. Why can't we do that with this one? I don't understand. That's how we've been doing business forever.
Yeah.
Right. And normally, we have the cards prepared to go in the mail immediately following the meeting. At this point, the cards have not even been prepared as they were not anticipated, so they would not be ready.
So What, Your Worship, then what would be the soonest time we could have a public hearing? The 29th?
A month from now. Four weeks.
Oh, boy. There's a dilemma. I don't want to delay that one.
So this motion is on, yeah. So we'll go through this and if this fails, then go ahead.
So can I be clear then? So this is just to defer it for two weeks for public input?
That's right. Further public input.
All right.
Or public meeting.
So can I get an answer, Your Worship?
Public, a public meeting. Hang on, I've got the staff waving their hands.
As I understand, it would be deferred for two weeks for a public, meaning a public input or deferred for a month because we can't get the cards out. But my understanding was the intent of the motion was that the public would partake in the meeting and that would take us to a month from now.
Okay, well, I'll try an amendment then, that we defer it for two weeks for public input.
We can't, because they can't get the, as it was explained by the clerk, cannot get the cards out in time, so. I think we should just, yeah, okay. Let's go through the speakers list.
But Your Worship, just before I go here, I'd like to know if I'm gonna be able to get the shadow study and whatever else was requested by other members of council.
That'll be another motion. Once we get dealt, once this one's dealt with, we'll look at another motion. Okay? Either way, we'll look at that. Counsel Kuntz.
Is there any way through, Your Worship, to staff that the developer could just hold, I mean, we've been having Zoom meetings. Everyone's become very familiar with Zoom meetings. That developer-held public information meeting is like this and they go through the, you know, if there's people really concerned or really excited or they wanna make their comments about about the building, you know, I guess I'm curious why that hasn't been, hasn't been done.
Your Worship, maybe I can just provide some comments. The requirement for public information meeting is pursuant to our own procedures. So there's no provincial requirement for public information meeting. As well as a development permit public hearing, there is no provincial requirement. That too is pursuant to our own procedural requirement, procedural bylaws. So Council Langley requirements include a public information meeting as well as a hearing, a development permit hearing, both of which have been suspended or addressed, I should say. Public information meetings are suspended and hearings are addressed through written submission opportunities. Those have been addressed, again, with the exception of the public information meeting, that have been suspended by council. Now, in terms of, I guess, making amendments, certainly, that's something that is within council's prerogative to do on a case-by-case basis. But on this particular, on this particular project, the context wasn't one that made staff to sort of, you know, raise any flags for staff, if you will, in terms of the need for any kind of a shadow analysis or any kind of a public information meeting because of the fact that it's actually quite undeveloped in the surrounding area. That said, we can appreciate and understand the desire of council to receive, I guess, input from a wider community such as, you know, commuters that are used to on the street and Highway 1, which can certainly be accommodated. But as the clerk has referenced, depending on what council's, I guess, objective might be or what council might have in mind, it may or may not be practical to occur in the next couple of weeks. And the other thing I wanted to mention, I have been able to confirm which staff, which I didn't have the information right there and then. When Council Woodward asked about the traffic impact study, I can confirm that one was required and one was completed and submitted to the province for them to get, then provide us with their approval of the project. So the traffic impact study was completed, but not the shadow analysis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Counsel Arneson.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just wanted to put a plug in for the fact that I appreciate this extra dialogue. I think that this is a very complicated and unusual situation, given the historical context, lengthy timelines, and the degree to which, according to Mr. Safi, there has been zoning and then it's apparently somehow been superseded, I guess, by neighborhood plans. So I think it is critical that if we are deciding this, there has to be more certainty in these outstanding issues in different counselors' minds, I think, are really important to get more information. And I guess now, further to what Mr. Safi is saying, if I could just ask for clarification regarding the traffic study. But if that traffic study was done, was it done in contemplation of a building of this size? Or was it done, you know, with the building that originally was anticipated on the site? Because to me, those would be very different things. And why wouldn't we trigger another traffic study if that was the case? So, Your Worship, maybe to Mr. Safi to find that out?
Thank you, Your Worship. Yes, the traffic study was for this particular project, Your Worship, with the current height identified. And I guess I have to also collect something else. I just said, literally just now, staff advised me that there was in fact a shadow analysis also completed. I was not anticipating this level of scrutiny of this application, so I can read up on it as well as I should have. So a couple of points I've been clarified upon or I've been corrected on. One is that traffic impact study was in fact done as part of the approval, obtaining of the approval from the provincial provincial mission transportation, as well as a traffic, sorry, a shadow analysis that was done. Not considering the fact that there was no, there's no residential developments in the surrounding area.
Just a quick comment. Yeah, maybe, maybe in the future, what would be helpful is to put those attachments there. And I know you weren't anticipating this level of scrutiny, but I see now that it's probably, under the circumstances, advisable to do that. So I look forward to seeing some of those things myself. Thank you.
Just to clarify, it was approved by the province, is that correct, Mrs. Safi, the traffic study?
That's correct, Your Worship.
Thank you. Counsel Whitmarsh.
Yeah, thank you. So that was helpful information. And, you know, so it does look like some of those things have a propensity to have and be able to digest before we make a decision. So I am supportive of a couple of week extension or deferral. But my question still is around, if we wanted to seek some public input over the next two weeks, recognizing that we can't have a face-to-face meeting, is there a way to advertise or get that out on our website so people could respond online to this? I'm not sure. When you say sending out cards, we don't obviously send cards out to every resident in the township. So I'm wondering how we can get some input over the next two weeks that might be helpful for us.
Well, as was explained earlier by the clerk, this would take a month. So if council does wish to have that type of input, we need a month, not two weeks. So preparations have to be made. Unfortunately, there's legislative requirements. But I think we should deal with this motion right now and then if there's another way council wants to do it, but I'll just give my
So just by the question, but that's, there's a difference between a public hearing and a public input.
This isn't a public hearing. This is a public input opportunity. But to get things mailed out to give appropriate time, staff like to have the two weeks. Ms. Bauer, is that that's our, that's been our process. And there is a council resolution. There's several council resolutions that authorize staff for the process that's been followed in this instance.
The mail-out would require more than, more than the next council meeting. If I understand correctly, we could put information on the website. And we can definitely do that. It might take us a week to get it together as we don't have any preparation for it and it could be up for the following week. That would, it would be definitely doable. Again, it would be up to individuals to come to the website. There'd be a difficulty in ensuring that the, everyone who wanted the information would get it with, it's a matter of getting it to them to know they can come to the website. We would have to figure something out for that.
Right. So I'm so Counsel Richter suggested that it would be good to get public input from all the residents or at least make it available to other residents in the township. Our practice is not in these cases to send out cards to every resident, is it? Like, I haven't heard of us doing that. So we only send it to those in the surrounding area anyways, and we've already done that. So I'm not sure what how we would then go after every, contact every resident or let them, every resident be aware that this is a possibility for them. I can't do that.
Yeah. So we have, I think there's some speakers that I want to speak a third time, but we won't. I think we should draw close to this motion. And I'll call the question on this particular motion, which is to defer for, maybe you can read it again, Ms. Bauer, so we're all clear on this.
But Your Worship, I'm trying to put an amendment in as well, okay? I've been trying for a while here.
Okay, well, that's why I slowed down a little bit. So your amendment would be to what?
For, for two weeks for more public input. Finished.
Well, that's what the motion is already. So the motion is for a public meeting.
If it's for two weeks for public input, then I'm voting for it.
So then changing it to from public meeting to public
Public input. Because a public meeting can't happen in four months.
That's an amendment. That's an amendment to this.
I will second that amendment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so it's been seconded, moved and amended to change the words from public meeting to public input. Okay, Counsel Richter.
Yes, I would like to speak to that. I would also like council to receive information on, in the next two weeks, on the traffic study, the shade study, the community amenities that we are getting from this significant increase in height on this building.
Okay, if, make that as a separate motion once we dealt with this. Okay, I'm gonna call the question on that amendment to the amendment. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Mary Froze, Counselor Whitmarsh, Counsel Kuntz is opposed. Amendment to the amendment carries. Motion, I'm gonna call the question on the amendment as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So Mary Froze, Counselor Whitmarsh, Counsel Kuntz opposed. That carries her back to the main motion as amended. I guess we're not. It's basically been deferred. So we're
So now we're gonna have a second motion?
That's right, your motion, your amendment.
Okay, I would like to put a motion on.
Just moving for further information as discussed.
Yes, that council be provided further information on this development around traffic, shade, and community amenities.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Moved and seconded by Counselor Whitmarsh. All the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Move on now to E4. Agricultural Land Commission application. This is at 2371 772 Avenue. There is, there are two alternative motions. One is to refer and one is to not refer.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move not, not refer.
I was gonna move with defer, refer.
Well, if one goes out, I'll go to the other one. So I'll accept Counsel Richter's move to refer if there's a, or to not refer, not refer if there's a seconder. Counsel David seconds it. So on not referring, Counsel Richter, if you wish to speak to that.
Yeah, I think that this is important that we don't do this because this is just eroding agricultural land for non-agricultural purposes. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Long.
Yeah, well, I mean, I sort of see a connection between the work that this company is doing with wood and agriculture. Maybe I'm, that's a bit of a stretch, but they've been around since 1977. They've been doing business there since 1999. A good portion of the property is still being reserved for agriculture. But I think that, to me, it kind of links in. You're providing posts for farms, aren't you? It's posts. Yeah. So anyway, that's why I think, I guess I'll vote against the non-refer, but I thought it had a good a good points that would advance it to the to the ALC. So that's why I would have supported it. But anyway, there we go. We'll see how the vote goes.
Thank you. So basically, I won't support this. I would support referring it, let Agricultural Land Commission make that decision. But I would like to ask staff, if this does carry, then my it won't matter, but can we do a time, can we ask the Agricultural Land Commission to have a time limited? So in other words, if this proponent, they own the land, but as soon as they leave the land, it has to be restored back or something to that effect? Because they've been at it this for over 20 years, I believe, on this property. So if the land commission does approve temporary use or temporary non-farm use, would they also put on a condition where it's time limited to the present owners of the property? Mr. Backen, do you have any thoughts on that?
Thank you, Your Worship. I think you're saying is, could this this use, which is, I guess, technically a non-farm use, could the provision for a non-farm use have a defined timeframe? I guess the answer is ultimately, that would be a recommendation to the Agricultural Land Commission. So if that were the objective, we would have to be very careful to make sure that it was referred with the preference that if it is to proceed, that there would be a time limit on the non-farm use.
Okay, so we'll deal with that if, depending on that will come with this motion. Thank you for that. Counsel Ferguson.
Oh, yes. If a quick question and I have a supplemental question. The first question, was this not the piece of property that we had looked at a few months ago regarding to improve the piece of property, if I may, through the chair?
Are you thinking of the one with the landfill application?
Yeah, landfill.
That was across the street and up the hill.
Okay, I thought it was close by. I had left my notes somewhere. My second question is, there used to be, if I may, through the chair to staff, a a referral to our rural plan. Well, where does this fit within our rural plan, if I may?
Yes, I don't know if we're clear on the question. This, that this is
We have a rural plan. It's in the agricultural land reserve. How does this fit within our rural plan?
Mr. Backen, Mr. Safi? Mr. Backen?
Thank you, Your Worship. Mr. Safi, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Worship. If I understand the question correctly, in terms of the context, which is the rural plan, the rural plan doesn't contemplate anything other than agricultural uses or supportive agricultural uses in certain, under certain conditions and in certain areas within the, within the defined area that is agricultural or rural. So this is, this is not in compliance with the rural plan.
Okay, so my next question would be, and this does happen from time to time, is either one, A or B, in the past hasn't really mattered to the ALR, they would make their own independent decision. Is that not correct?
Absolutely, yes, Your Worship. The ALC makes up their own, their own mind and their own decision based on their guiding principles and their, I guess, mandates, regardless of whether an application is supported by municipality or not.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Mayor, we've made lots of referrals over the years to the land commission. And I don't think it matters in our case whether we say refer or not refer. I think the fact, the question is, this the statement should just be, be just refer, because I don't think not refer is gonna matter. So that way we get an answer. So I can't support this motion, but I would support B, which would be refer. And if the land commission chooses not to accept it, then that would be up to them. So that's where I stand. Thank you.
Your Worship, may I just provide another piece of information for council? Just very quickly and briefly, even though the land commission does make up their own mind, historically, when staff have put forward a recommendation for council, the support or rather the referral of applications have only been a recommendation by staff in cases where an application is actually in compliance with our zoning bylaw or the rural plan. In this case, it is not. So that's why the decision really left up to council in terms of a policy direction.
Thank you. But Mr. Safi, to clarify, if we do not refer, I don't believe it goes to the commission under the new revisions to the Agricultural Land Commission Act, whereas in past it may have. Is it not correct that it would not go to the commission if it's not referred? If it is in fact referred, the commission may still deny the application, but it can't get there unless council authorizes it to go?
Yes, correct.
That was, that was the question I wanted to answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Arneson.
Thank you, Your Worship. And just to comment, I don't particularly have a question, but just some comments that are reflective, I think, of the discussion around who's got the jurisdiction. So I support not referring this. And my logic is, is true, the Agricultural Land Commission gets to decide ultimately. But the reason we have policies in the town But the reason we have policies in the township of Langley and the metro overriding policy of outside the urban containment boundary is staff has helpfully provided us a context in which we, as the local government decision makers, make a decision and determination. So I would just point to our agricultural viability strategy and say, why would you have a research and study done that was adopted by the township of Langley that expressly says that you should not be encouraging uses that are undermining to the local agricultural uh industry? So that would be number one, and urban containment boundary, to me, it's really important, I think, that we have a particular currency with metro. And if we are then going to put something forward that flies in the face of our urban containment boundary, I think you have to have a very strong rationale as to why you would want to do that, and I don't think that meets the test, this particular application, so I won't be supporting to send it uh to the ALC.
Thank you. Counsel Whitmarsh?
Yeah, I I I'm gonna support this motion, uh I don't think we should send this one to the ALC, I think we need to um you know, do what we can to protection of of our farmland, and there's lots of different interpretations of what that is, but this is very clear to me that this has nothing to do with agriculture. And uh I also think that they've been doing things on the property that don't necessarily fit our own uh zoning bylaws, so I I'm I'm not, I will support this, I don't think we should send it.
Thank you. Uh Counsel Richter?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanna point out on page one and on page two, the staff report clearly says the proposed non-farm use application does not comply with the permitted uses allowed in the RU three zoning. And then on page two, it says, the business is currently licensed as an accessory home op- occupation, limited to office use. The current operation does not comply with the township zoning bylaw provisions to qualify as an accessory home occupation. I I mean, it's right there in black and white. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, yeah, thank you. Counsel Long?
Uh the recommendation B says refer it to the ALC for consideration based on agricultural merits, and I think there is a merit to this operation. And I think it's been there for a long, long time, so you know, I support uh uh something that's existed for for quite a large, a long period of time. They're processing wood uh into poles that can be used for farming, so uh it's a shame that we that we sort of have this motion the way it is, because I would prefer that the ALC make that decision. So I I can't support this, but we'll see what happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Whitmarsh. Okay, I see no further speakers. So this is on uh E four A, I'm gonna call the question, all those in favor? And opposed? Or froze? Counsel Long, Counsel Kunst opposed, it, Counsel Woodward, you just.
Yeah, sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'm in favor of.
Favor, okay, thank you, so three opposed. And so it fails, we, or passes uh to not refer, thank you. Move on to E five, this is public art policy review and update. Uh like to thank staff for the great report, there's lots of information in it, had a good time to read it, there's uh several things we could do, uh we, the motion is that we could re- refer this off to uh a CPC for discussion consideration, or we could approve it, as said in the report, as as is, if we're happy with it, and then certainly can always amend it uh further on down the road, so I'll open it up um for council and seek their direction. Counsel Richter?
Uh yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um I'm okay with receiving the report, I think I'm okay with referring it to uh Council Process Committee for further discussion. But to me, there are a number of things in this report that need additional clarification, for example, the reserve also includes a required ten percent contribution towards the future maintenance and conservation of public art. Is that enough? Like, what are the costs the township are gonna have to bear in the future, and is this ten percent gonna, gonna carry it? Uh the report does not address how Trinity Western got their torch up on public property in the roundabout. That's not been addressed. And uh I think that that needs to be addressed, and it's not addressed in this report. So I'm, like I say, I'm okay with receiving it and sending it to council for, or to uh CPC for more discussion. But I really do think we have to have a a much more fulsome discussion around the costs of this going forward, thank you.
Thank you for the input, uh Counsel Woodward?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor, I didn't really know where the recommendation came from to, like, so I I I know it came from staff or the author of the report, but uh why send it to CPC, why wouldn't we be able to discuss it, just kind of the logic before I discuss it further? You know, why send it to CPC for discussion when we can just discuss it at our council table?
That's the recommendation, there's no motion on the floor, so I I don't know if staff can respond to that, I think they just were.
Just trying to understand why, and then maybe then.
If it required further discussion perhaps, or just suggesting a process that was already in place. Mr. Backen? I I can speak for staff.
No, thank you, your worship, that's that's correct, the the report is rather um lengthy, and it's tried to cover up some of the issues. And already, we we noticed that there's some previous memos, uh for example, as was referenced that um have been some time ago that dealt with some of the issues we've already talked about here. So the question really was, did we wanna uh take a lengthy period to go over this policy in a council meeting, or is it may also need further refinement for such things as uh contributions by local artists and other matters, would it be better off to actually take it a bit offline and have that further discussion? If the report hits the mark and meets the con- the the concerns that were previously expressed, by all means, we could proceed. If not, though, we thought it might be better to to take it offline a little bit from uh from other council businesses, spend a bit more time on it in the Council Process Committee.
Okay, so that's, that clarifies it, I mean, I I agree, there's a fair bit of yellow in here, and there's a fair bit of red, and you know, I wouldn't mind taking a bit more time with the policy before adopting it. Well, my concern, of course, would be that the Council Process Committee may not talk about it for quite a while, so this was, this one's back, I think September twenty nineteen, this one started. Um in regards to me, just trying to, uh and council, of course, too, trying to give the, you know, members of the public a process to apply to use some of that reserve funding for projects, so I wouldn't want that to get held up now for another number of months, waiting to get up to the CPC agenda, so if someone really wants it to go to CPC, I'm fine with that. But maybe we could look at moving it to the top of the list for CPC, so that we would get to it relatively soon, thanks.
Certainly, if that's uh in the motion, then then that would be um council's direction. Thank you. Uh who are we next? Lose my track, lose track here. Counsel Whitmarsh?
Yeah, thank you, your worship, um yeah, I I um, I think that uh having some extra time would be really helpful, I I am one that would would appreciate more time on this. I think I I have a lot of questions, I think there's a lot of discussion points around this. Um staff has made in the report, which is very lengthy and very thorough, and I appreciate that. Um I think the extra time to have a good, open, uh long discussion around it and not be bound necessarily by um some of the um rules that we have for our 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 council meetings, um I think it would be helpful, and then to bring it back, so I'm fully supportive of moving it to to a a a process committee meeting and to bring it to attention as soon as we can in that, in within those meetings, I I would support that.
Thank you. Counsel Long?
Yeah, I agree with the comments uh entirely, it it's a very complicated document, uh so we need to have uh I need some more time to look it over, and whether, whether we, uh well, Council Process is probably the best place for it. Uh it goes back a lot further than uh than uh Counsel Woodward said, I remember discussing wrapping uh power boxes uh what, fifteen years ago? And we had this chap come and talk about graffiti, I mean, that would be one way of dealing with graffiti, is to get these power boxes wrapped in in a, you know, that could be a partnership with local schools and artists and everything else to put the correct images on it. So I'm supportive of the rest of council, I think we need to proceed on this, I can't do it today because I haven't had a chance to read it ten times, and it's gonna require ten times going through it, I think, for me to fully comprehend what's being proposed. So whatever uh we can do to get it's on the top of the list, I'm very supportive of.
Thank you. Uh Counsel Arneson?
Uh thank you, your worship, yes, I like the idea of an expedited presentation. For me, I think that having a presentation that goes along with this will create context. And I think looking at it, uh it it is very complicated, and I think just given the length of the discussion over time, I guess it's unfortunate that it hasn't resulted in more activity with respect to public art, which I think is really important, but on the other hand, I think it's good to map out as much as you can and predict what some of the kind of applications might be in order to have a robust enough policy, and I think it would be difficult to do that at today's meeting, so I would prefer it to be at a Council Process Committee meeting sometime in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Davis?
Thank you very much, you know, um it was a good report, thank you, staff. I was concerned about um addressing the controversial issue, the issues. I believe that this, the public art policy was turned into public art to try to solve some of the controversial issues. And staff did a good job on page five, uh through uh staff would like to remind council, there are people who are going to continue to challenge uh the need um for art and art in its um, in its form. And I think that this policy didn't really address that, and I'm not so sure that this policy can address it. It's uh because if you look on page fi- four here, they've got four examples um that are uh, you know, like, to me, this is art. You know, a welcome to Brookswood sign, how could that be controversy? Uh heritage marker in Fort Langley, how can that be controversial? You know, uh heritage markers are there so that we can know where we came from, where we're going. Fort Langley Women's Institution marker. Ironically, it's a good one to talk to about today, because, but it but, but it doesn't uh, it doesn't say, like, as a dairy farmer, I want a big picture of a cow. Well, that's gonna annoy the vegans, you know?
Approved.
Uh, what's that?
Approved.
Approved, okay, so I I could see that this is a really complex issue. And the reason I wanted to see this report come to council is to try to, so we, like, we run three flags up the pole. Federal, uh the Canadian flag, uh the uh provi- uh provincial and the township. And um I I I'm gonna pick on Margaret, our Counselor Kunst, no, we we don't want a tulip flag up. I'm I'm I I'm, this is, I'm, I, please, I'm gonna get in trouble for this, I know. But do you understand, three flags, uh and there's no controversy next week or next year when somebody wants to run a flag up with a cow on it? So that's, um I I've, I read it, and uh I actually, I think staff did a really good job, it's just it didn't solve my my issue of when it comes to council, we don't, council doesn't have to get into the controversial part of it. Anyhow, thank you very much.
Thanks. Counsel Ferguson?
I think that uh uh Counselor Davis has to understand what species of cow that may perhaps that Holstein people might not like with the jerseys people put up and vice versa. But I, listen, I did wanna say this is needed, um other, the public art policy review and update is needed because other communities have had it in place for a while, and as Counselor Long has said, we've had different types of things um in place, and we've actually asked the uh uh development community provide some sort of um public uh art. Um I think it's important that we also use cautious, and I think it's important that we go over this um this uh the policy for uh another, for the CPC, the process committee meeting, and also um analyze it a little bit more, because in in Vancouver, their public art policy, and I'm not criticizing Vancouver too much, although they like to be criticized, they they get a kick out of it. They put a clock up underneath a bridge, and it cost an awful lot of money, they had to hire a big crane, and uh the day after they started it up, it it stopped working. So uh common sense is important to put the the public art uh and public amenity in the right place. Um and also that um we need to discuss it. Um maintenance is also something that challenges, and beauty's in the eye of the beholder, but I still think common sense and location are important. So I'm looking forward to uh having this go to another uh look at at the Council Process Committee, if that's the process we're gonna go, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Kunst?
Yeah, I'm the same, I look forward to, you know, talking about this at a CPC meeting, so um thank you to staff for all the hard work that you did on this uh policy. Um and um, yeah, and and if it can happen sooner than later, that would be awesome.
Okay, thanks. Okay, before I go to Counsel Richter, uh perhaps she wants to put the motion forward, so it sounds like.
I wanna move the motion.
Okay, just just let me finish, it sounds like there's good consensus uh to move forward to to meeting. I wanted to just um, I know uh discussed CPC with staff uh earlier today, and uh there are several items outstanding that I suggested we bring to the workshop on the, uh in April, we have a workshop scheduled. And uh then we'll see them all in in totality, and council could can then give direction, and perhaps we could have this one come back in May. So we could make the motion to have this come back in May, or if you wanna take to the workshop. And uh because there are about half a dozen items outstanding, we could then prioritize uh which ones you wanna see go forward, and then uh put this one on in the May workshop, uh it's March, I think we're pretty much done, the spring break coming up, and that sort of thing, so uh my suggestion, uh Counsel Richter, if you wanted to move this to the, as it says there, then I'm gonna make sure it's added to the to the workshop, or you could move it with the provision, proviso that it's uh placed in May at a CPC meeting, we've scheduled that. So I'll leave that to you, Counsel.
Well, I am not sure what we have on our list right now for CPC, I'm gonna move the motion. Uh if we wanna talk about prioritizing what we wanna talk about in CPC in April, I'm okay with that. But I really want to focus in on the costs of this, and also uh like, it says on page two, staff are now suggesting the establishment of an annual art competition and exhibition.
So, so we'll bring this.
And an opportunity to purchase greater numbers of smaller works, well, where are we gonna put these?
That's right, so what we'll do is, if you wanna move the motion, I'll make sure it comes to the workshop, staff can then prioritize it, we'll have uh opportunity.
I I will move the motion.
Sir Secunder?
Long.
Uh Counsel Long seconds it, um I'll call the question, all those in favor? Opposed, that carries unanimously, thank you. Uh we move to E six, this is the facility allocation policy review, and there's a policy, I, just like Mr. Backen, to maybe give us a little background on this, I know it's a we are uh looking at other municipalities, what they're doing, and there's been a few changes, maybe we can just provide a little bit of a introduction to this report, thank you.
Well, thank you, your worship, as was referenced in the report, this is a primarily a, an update and and a bit of a review of our our current policy. Our current policy dates back to two thousand thirteen, and as we look at that and compare it to other communities and our situation since two thousand thirteen, we see some of the thresholds have changed, uh for example, uh I think our threshold is about fifty percent, whereas other communities are ranging between sixty and seventy-five percent. That threshold being the percentage of users who are given uh necessary to get effectively priority in our our booking system. And as well, the fact that a number of the uh the uh facilities we have have expanded since back in two thousand thirteen. Uh so it's it's intended to encapsulate some of those newer facilities and provide a process going forward. Mr. Stare, I see that you're out there, did you wish to add anything else in terms of some of the the changes we may be seeing?
And you're muted, you're muted, Mr. Stare, I think you've taken your mute up, we're not hearing you. Well, your worship, I guess we'll go with my uh my summary, because Mr. Stare, we we can't, we can't hear him.
No, I you're muted. Perhaps Mr. Stare can try to get himself online, your worship, as we uh we answer some of the questions.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, um just, I was just gonna add, um sorry about that, the uh code of conduct was also another.
Well, we lost you again. Whatever was cut out.
Your worship, one of what, it's been uh two and a hours and ten minutes, could we have a short break and then they can fix it?
Sure.
Oh, up to council.
Yeah.
That sounds like a good point.
Okay, I'll I'll call, we don't have a motion on the floor yet, so let's call a brief recess, and uh Mr. Stare can get things sorted out, so let's come, it's uh three ten, on my watch, come back at three twenty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Little break for for. Okay, if, um, everyone could put the cameras on, if they're there, we can see who's in attendance. We'll reconvene the meeting. Mr. Davis, sir, councillor Ferguson. Okay, so we'll reconvene the, uh, the meeting. And so, uh, we were waiting for Mr. Stare. Hopefully he was able to, uh, practice technology. We'll continue on with the, uh, E six. Mr. Stare.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, assuming you can all hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry about that. I logged back in and, uh, it seems to be working now. So just to add to Mr. Backen's comments, the main, uh, other piece that we added was the code of conduct. Um, and that, that's a code of conduct that's been posted at our sites, uh, in the last year. So, um, that is.
Okay. Great, thank you for that. All right, uh, just, uh, anybody have any questions on the report?
Yes.
Councillor Richter, go ahead.
Um, yes, I would like, I've got a question and I also have an amendment I'd like to make to the policy, Mr. Mayor. Uh, my question is with regards to the motion that says that we approve the policy. I'd like to know what the total financial impact of approving this policy will be. And the amendment that I'd like to make, uh, which would be on page three, under items number four and number seven, I want the word toxicity added in. In the sense that, um, township will not tolerate toxic relationships.
Okay, so when we get to that, Will, thank you for that.
Okay. So I'll wait until everybody talks and then I can come back and make that amendment?
Yeah, once we, yeah, we, we don't have the motion on yet, so we'll, we'll come back to that. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, thank you, your worship. Um, yes, through your worship to Mr. Stare, I had a question regarding this and it's sort of like the context of, um, I know staff has worked to put this together, which I appreciate. I just wondered whether or not there was any engagement with the user groups, having put this, the timelines together. Cause I, I wondered if there was potentially any unintended consequences with some of these changes that have been made specifically around scheduling and perhaps around the constituents of some of the groups from going to a higher percentage of township residents. So that was my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that for Mr. Stare?
Yes, please.
Mr. Stare, thank you.
Yeah, so, um, this is primarily a re- a review, just, um, and updating with what other municipalities are primarily doing. So we, we did not, uh, go and, and sit with all the user groups and, and review this. Um, we don't anticipate, uh, financial implications, changes, um, to this. Um, there's, there's, uh, there's nothing that's been, um, really anticipated there. Sorry, was there another part to the question?
It was about the percentage of individuals who reside in the township, so it's gone up. So I just wondered if there might be implications for some specific groups based on the constituents that they have.
Yeah, I'd say it, it, it does depend on, uh, their particular rosters. I, I don't have, uh, each groups in front of me because it does change from year to year. Um, and, um, yeah, we, we would have to go back, I guess, and look at each, uh, each group, see, see if it impacts, who it impacts. Um, I think the, the, yeah, the, the plan here was more so around updating to what other municipalities are doing. And, uh, it does also have, um, wording inserted, uh, at the bottom, the last part, with exception to user groups that have a township, uh, I'm sorry, in the first part there, um, or accepted rationalized by the director of parks and recreation or their designate. So, um, there is some, some alternatives there, uh, to be considered if this does impact some of those people.
Okay, I like the idea of discretion. Thank you.
Good, councillor Kunst.
Yeah, my question is, um, through your worship to, um, Mr. Stare. Um, how is the, how is it monitored, the, the, where people live? Like, how, how do we make sure that they're all, we have that percentage correct?
Mr. Stare.
Yeah, s- sorry, um, very good question. Um, it, it is a challenge. We, we ask for a letter, uh, from the executive typically, uh, stating the percentage and typically, in some cases, uh, there's rosters even provided, just verifying postal codes, um, whatnot. Um, and, and so, um, it, it can be a challenge, um, just being able to verify some of that for sure.
Um, I had just another couple of questions. Um, now, if a user group is less than sixty percent, do they just go to the back of the line or are they still gonna be able to use, um, the facilities? They just don't get priority? What happens to that group that maybe currently is at fifty percent?
Yeah, so just, it follows the, um, the allocation process, so they would, they would move down the list, um, behind those that are at sixty percent or above.
Okay.
Like it is right now, those that are fifty percent or above.
Um, one last question. Um, you're taking the word culture out. Is there, is there a particular reason that you're doing that? On page, um, page three. It's changing the division from recreation, culture and parks to parks and recreation.
Yeah, so culture is, uh, part of the, the arts, culture and community initiatives division. So, um, I think that's just updating, uh, our division as parks and recreation.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, councillor Ferguson.
Oh, yes, um, I think that I, I haven't, uh, heard what councillor Richter has, uh, proposed, but I think it's important to have, uh, uh, quality relationships with, uh, our user groups. Now, I'm just gonna give an example and, Mr. Stare, perhaps you can, uh, help me out. Uh, say I wanted to have the Tiddlywinks Club and we are really good at Tiddlywinks and, uh, it's important that we do that. Um, but, you know, we don't disclose who our members are. We only halfway disclose who our members are. Um, at what point in time, uh, number one, how does a, a group or organization, especially a private group? I know that my, uh, kids have been involved with, uh, po- soccer, uh, organized soccer, organized hockey, organized baseball, organized ball hockey and, and gymnastics, physicals. And those are pretty good because most of the people there live in the community and probably more ninety percent are. But how does the staff handle private groups and organizations like my Tiddlywinks friends that really don't disclose the members? How'd they do that?
The, the policy, um, overall, um, looks at, uh, the, you know, the, the not-for-profit status groups, the youth, uh, status groups. Um, the, uh, you know, those that are local, um, resident primarily groups. Um, so there's all these different, uh, measures. So those that are private or for-profit, uh, would fall down that list. Uh, so, you know, they would get the last priority in, uh, in allocation.
So, Mr. Stare, I would think it's important for you and your staff to make sure the private, I guess, and some not-for-profit groups give an accurate list and we're very fair and non-controversial and, uh, working with us as a community to provide those type of information because that's important, uh, for our community. Uh, those are my comments. Thank you.
Uh, councillor Richter?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so my question about the financial impacts on this, could, could that be addressed? And then I'd like to put forward an amendment to the policy.
Yeah, Mr. Stare? On the financial, yeah, I think you mentioned earlier.
Just answer the financial. We just, we don't anticipate, uh, financial impacts to this. There's, uh, the, the amendments are primarily, just to clarify, um, you know, the, the code of conduct portions that were previously omitted, um, to clarify some of the, um, you know, to different user groups, the, the limitations and, and the sixty percent portion going from fifty to sixty. So, um, the, we don't anticipate financial, um, changes for groups in this.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, Mr. Mayor, on the policy itself, which appears on, it starts on page six. So at the very bottom of page seven, under code of conduct, the last sentence says, be free from harassment, discrimination and physical or verbal abuse. I would like to change that sentence to read, be free from harassment, discrimination, comma, physical or verbal abuse, comma, and toxicity.
Okay, so how about we move the? Yeah, that could be added. Mr., I just wanna check.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Backen, that language works. Okay, so that's removed and seconded by councillor Ferguson. Uh, I don't see any discussion. I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor?
Oh, hold it, hold it, hold it.
Well, I don't see a hand up. You just put your hand.
Yeah, trying to push all the buttons at the same time.
There you go.
Um.
Councillor Long, go ahead.
So I don't know if I can understand the true definition of toxicity. Toxicity. It talks about chemical substances and so forth. So, really, yeah, I, I don't know. Isn't that too broad a definition?
Well, I, I know.
I'll ask, yeah, I'll ask staff to help, help out. Mr. Backen, go ahead.
Uh, no, thank you, your worship. Uh, I think the question is, what did the mover intend by the reference to the term toxicity? Cause I don't believe it was in terms of substances or, or those things. So I'd have to turn back to the mover in terms of what the intention was.
No, the intention is about having positive relationships between our staff and the user groups. A toxic, a toxic organization creates negative relationships. And we should not, we should have a zero tolerance for toxicity.
Okay, that clarifies. Thank you. Yeah, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Your worship, th- there isn't a definition that I can find that describes toxicity is what the council just said.
But it's being added on to the sentence. So I think it's, uh, based, what staff seem to be okay with that word being added. Mr. Backen's nodded his head, so it's being added to the, onto that one sentence. So it stands with that and I think it, uh, is clear. So, Mr. Backen would be, is that word, uh, maybe you could just help clarify? Is that word toxicity added onto that sentence, uh, clear enough or does it need further definition?
Uh, your worship, I think it has to be construed in the context of the mover's interpretation, which was really as to the relationships. And I think Ms. Bauer has picked up the language as part of the, the amendment, so I think we're clear with it.
So I'm just wondering, your worship, that how that would be viewed down the road when, when you look at this document and say, well, what in the world are we talking about? So, okay?
Bauer, did you wanna read it back?
Uh, the motion is that on page, at the bottom of page seven, I believe, um, that the words be added to put in a comma, then prob- then physical or verbal abuse, comma, and then toxicity.
Okay.
Yeah, to, to, so I'm not gonna support it because to, to me, it's, it's already there. If you're free from the other things, then toxicity, toxicity shouldn't be an issue. Anyway, not at all.
Then we should, uh, have a motion to divide, uh, so the amendment would, would be a separate motion. But I, I believe staff are still discussing, maybe to get some wording in there.
Well, it would, Mr. Mayor, would it make it, uh, to say a toxic relationships? Like, toxicity is about an organization that is so negative to deal with. It just creates toxic relationships.
It's hard, hard to define. I know we're struggling here.
Very hard to define.
Your worship, the previous comments, I think, are embedded in the policy. I think the intention is to add the word toxicity or in this case, or to, to impede or prohibit toxic relationships where one party is acting effectively with ill will or ill intent towards the other party, um, regardless of what the rest of the policy is requiring. So I think that's how the context within which we understand it. And I think a motion to divide would be simply dividing the policy from this, uh, which is already self-contained. So this is really just an amendment to the policy by adding those words.
That's correct. So, uh, if councillor, with that explanation, if councillor Long, we still wish to, uh, divide, that may, that would be appropriate, at least he can support.
No, no, I mean, it's, it's an amendment that I, that I, that we either supported or don't support. So I'm.
Yeah, this, so it's been moved with that change. That's, that's why I'm saying we need, we would need to divide it out. Cause we moved it with.
Oh, oh, no, 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 no. No, I, I, it needs to be an amendment because I'm certainly supporting the policy, but I don't think I might be amendment in there.
Yeah, no, I, I just moved an amendment, Mr. Mayor, to add those words.
There was no motion on the floor, so I took it that you moved the motion with that change.
I thought we had the motion. Oh, okay.
No, there was no motion on the floor. So I, I took, that's why I took it that you moved it with. So just to make it simple, we'll just divide it and that way it's like an amendment. It's been moved with that. That was, that was what I, uh, stated. So, very simple, um, we'll just divide it. So the first part is, uh, what's on the report and the second part is what councillor Richter had added. So, and that, that will solve that. So, uh, I'll call the question on the first part. All those in favor? That's, that we approved the attached, uh, updated federal allocation policy with this proposed, uh, amendments. And then we're gonna do the extra amendment after. I should have done it the other way, but a little confusing. Call the question. All those in favor? First part? Opposed. Okay, so the second part is to add those words that were just explained.
And toxicity at the end of code of conduct.
That's correct. Mr. Backen?
Your worship, just the mover and seconded for both the first part and the second part?
I'll move.
Fr- Ferguson second.
Okay. All the question, all those in favor? Opposed.
Opposed. This is on the addition of the toxicity.
That's right. That's right. So that, that addition carries. Okay, so we'll move on to bylaws for final adoption. And I one, this highway development works agreement, Qualico Developments, bylaw number five, six, eight, two. Can I have a motion, please?
So I'll move.
Councillor Arneson, Secunder. Councillor Whitmarsh, I see no discussion. Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed. It carries unanimously. Thank you. I two, it's Langley, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-five, five-year financial plan bylaw and development cost charge reserve fund expenditure bylaw, bylaw number five, six, nine, two and five, six, nine, one. Have a motion.
So I'll move, Ferguson.
Second by councillor Whitmarsh. Councillor Richter?
Uh, yes, I, I don't support a three point nine nine percent tax increase this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, all, see no for the discussion. I'll call the question. All those in favor? And opposed?
I'm opposed.
Councillor Richter opposed. The motion carries. Thank you. Move on to I three, user pay utility rate bylaws for twenty twenty-one. Bylaw five, six, nine, three and bylaw five, six, nine, four. Can I have a motion, please? Councillor Davis and a Secunder. Councillor Kunst, uh, councillor Richter, uh.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't take my hand down.
Okay, thank you. I see no discussion. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed.
I'm opposed.
Councillor Richter opposed. It carries. Thank you. And move to, on to I four. Uh, resorting application number one, zero, six, one, five. Uh, this is infinity properties. I'll start with the bylaws. Bylaw five, five, seven, zero and five, five, seven, one. Can I have a motion on the bylaws? Moved by councillor Long, second by councillor Ferguson. See no discussion. All those in favor? Opposed. Councillor Arneson, councillor Richter opposed. And that carries. Uh, we have two development permits, development permit one, zero, one, zero, two, zero and one, zero, one, zero, three, two. Have a motion on the development permits, please?
Move.
Councillor Whitmarsh, second by councillor Davis. See no discussion. All those in favor? Opposed.
Opposed.
Councillor Arneson, councillor Richter opposed. Carries. Thank you. I five. He is resorting application one, zero, zero, five, one, seven. I'll start with the bylaw, uh, bylaw five, six, four, eight. Have a motion, please? Councillor Davis moves it. Councillor Whitmarsh seconds it. See no discussion. All those in favor? And opposed?
Opposed.
Councillor Arneson, councillor Richter opposed. Carries. And we now have, uh, two development permits, uh, one, zero, zero, nine, eight, five and one, zero, one, one, four, six. Have a motion, please? Councillor Davis moves it and a Secunder.
Long.
Councillor Long, see no discussion. Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed.
Opposed.
Councillor Arneson, councillor Richter opposed. Carries. Go on to I six, and this is resorting application one, two, zero, four, five, nine. Uh, interface architecture bylaw number five, four, five, three. Can I have a motion on the bylaw, please? Councillor Long and second by councillor Kunst. See no discussion. All those in favor? And opposed?
Opposed.
Councillor Arneson, councillor Richter opposed. Carries. And we have a development permit application number one, zero, zero, nine, two, one. Can I have a motion on that, please? Councillor Whitmarsh and a Secunder. Councillor Kunst, see no discussion. Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed.
Opposed.
Councillor Arneson, councillor Richter opposed. Carries. Thank you. We want to I seven. Resorting application number one, zero, zero, five, three, five, uh, Resigning application number one, zero, five, three, five. Uh, this is Works and Medical. Bylaws five, four, four, seven. Kind of a motion on the bylaw? Counselor Whitmarsh.
Second Ferguson.
Counselor Ferguson seconds. No discussion. Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. And on the development permit application number one, zero, one, zero, one, four. Have a motion.
So move Ferguson.
Counselor Ferguson moves it. Second to Counselor Arnesson. Uh, discussion. See none. Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you. And move on to correspondence. There's two items of correspondence. First, have a motion to receive. Counselor Davis and.
Ferguson.
Ferguson. On receipt, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries. There is a request to support of, uh, to support a, uh, from a member of parliament, uh, Mr. Tickle, Popcha. And, uh, regarding a, uh, is regarding a national three-digit suicide hotline. Uh, I would like to move that.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Whitmarsh. And discussion, Counselor Richter?
Yeah, I think this could be a, a, a good idea. Um, I'm just wondering if there's gonna be any costs to the township from doing this. And I wonder if staff could comment on that, please?
Sure, Mr. Backen. Believe the request is a letter for support. I don't know if there'd be any cost if this implemented.
I think that's correct, Your Worship. As I'm reading it, I'm simply saying that this is a letter of support for that. Um, so as such, we wouldn't be assuming any cost from simply issuing the letter.
Okay, but ultimately, if this thing does go into effect, will there be costs that the township will have to bear?
Your Worship, that would be, be hard to predict because it would involve the federal government and the provincial government, uh, entering into some sort of relationship. Uh, because it's originating, uh, uh, at the federal level. Uh, the province could always certainly download something. But traditionally, they've taken health issues, um, and then dealt with those at the regional level at least, or at the provincial level, such as through the, uh, Fraser Valley Health Authority here from, uh, from that perspective.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Arnesson?
Thank you, Worship. I just want to speak in support of this. I'm happy to, uh, advocate for this. I think with COVID and many other things, there is a huge spike in terms of anxiety and mental health crises. So I think it would be very prudent for us to, uh, lend our support to this. I think it is a good initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Long?
Yeah, I'm supporting it too, but in terms of costs, it'll be the same as the nine, one, one, I think, is that it'll become a cost to the individual user. Uh, you know, everyone's bill will go up, uh, a dollar or something like, whatever the number is. So, but anyway, it's a good idea. But I don't think we can, we can actually qualify. Who's gonna have to pay? But somebody obviously will.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you. And move on to minutes of committees. Uh, we have Minutes for Tree Protection Advisory Committee and the Seniors Advisory Committee. Could I have a motion, uh, to receive?
Move for three Ferguson.
Counselor Ferguson and seconder. Counselor Arnesson, uh, Counselor Long. Do your hands still up from before? Is that for this? Oh, it's gone. Okay, thank you. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries. Thank you. There is, uh, K two, which is the work plan for the Seniors Advisory Committee. Could I have, uh, mover?
So move Ferguson.
Counselor Ferguson, second by Counselor Arnesson. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Uh, carries. Thank you. Now I'll get my mayor's support up.
Most important part of the meeting.
You know, it's a highlight for me. Bring it into focus here. If you're breather. Alright, good afternoon, everyone, and, uh, and welcome. Uh, I'd like, on February twenty-third, members of council, I took part in the dementia friendly forum. The purpose of the forum was to publicly kick off the planning process to prepare a township age and dementia friendly action plan. And provided community members with an opportunity to learn about dementia, dementia-friendly communities, and ways to participate, ways to participate in the community engagement program. On February the twenty-fifth, uh, the B C Ministry of Tourism, Arts, Culture and Sport announced that the township of Langley will receive, drumroll please, seven hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollar community economic recovery infrastructure program, grant for Salishin Place by the river, the center that the township is building in Fort Langley in partnership with local First Nations. This contribution will help fund the third floor convention amenities at the New Arts and Heritage Center. And we have thanked the province for their contribution. The ground of applause. You hear the Zoom crowd clapping for that. Love to see grants. We really appreciate the assistance in working with the First Nations. The virtual Langley Volunteer Bureau AGM also took place on February the twenty-fifth. Uh, the Langley Volunteer Bureau is a nonprofit organization that connects volunteers and students with associations that need assistance. If you're looking to volunteer or need volunteers, please contact, uh, them. And I was, uh, pleased to bring, uh, greetings on behalf of the township of Langley. The Langley School trustee by-election took place on February twenty-seven. I'd like to thank all of the candidates who ran for this important position. Congratulate to, uh, Charlie Fox for securing his seat on the board. Uh, Translink Maris Council sent a letter today to federal ministers to call on the government of Canada to use its upcoming budget to quickly commit its recently announced new transit funding, stage two of the Surrey Langley Skytrain, among other regional initiatives. This funding, if committed in the coming months, will clear the path for shovel-ready projects like the Surrey Langley Skytrain and the low-carbon fleet strategy. Help our region expand transit service, create new jobs, and recover from, from the pandemic more quickly. Council attended several events over the last couple of weeks. Uh, councils, Arnesson and Whitmarsh attended the twenty twenty-one Intelligent Community Forum Smart Twenty-One Conference from February twenty-second to twenty-four. Mission of the ICF is to help communities in the digital age find a new path to economic development and community growth. One that creates inclusive prosperity, tackles social challenges, and enriches quality of life. The Township of Langley was named by the ICF as one of the top twenty-one intelligent communities from around the world. Congratulations to township staff, who with the support of council, have established an amazing framework of strategies and guiding documents over the years. Counselor Arnesson also participated in a photo op for the new Rainbow Crosswalk in Murrayville. Adequate funding has been raised to support the installation of the crosswalk at two, two, two street and forty-eight, uh, A Avenue. Langley School Board and district staff will work with the township on next steps. And as I understand it, the money was raised, uh, through the community. So, uh, hats off to the community for supporting this. So with that, I'll go back to my Zoom meeting. If counsel has anything to add?
I do. Whoops.
Okay, just let me get my, there we go. Counselor Ar- uh, Arnesson, go ahead, and then Counselor.
Yes, thank you, Worship. Um, I actually have two reports, so, um, unfortunately, I don't have any graphics to go along. So I did want to follow up on our climate action committee meeting that we had this month because we're endeavoring to start down the road of our new roadmap. So there was two of them that are particularly, uh, important. I think they're all important. But the first one had to do with the air quality and conditions in the metro-wide region, further to the Metro Climate twenty fifty roadmap. Uh, there's lots of details, but people could look that up themselves. I don't want to get into a lot of the verbiage. Um, but I think the other one is equally important, and it has to do with buildings and the degree to which we are working towards twenty fifty. All buildings are zero emission in their operations. And as you might be aware, and I know there has been discussion around our own council table, the challenge is to try and meet these really accelerated, um, benchmarks to make sure that we are doing our absolute best. And so there'll be a lot of engagement and they'll be reaching out from Metro to try and find out from user groups and the public at large, their degree of support and what kind of feedback, uh, could be given to help to, uh, promote these initiatives. So that's my expedited, um, Metro Climate Action Committee. I also want to report on the F P R L. I don't have a meeting until Wednesday. However, um, I did want to, there's, um, monthly updates that come out. And so I wanted to briefly talk about some of the initiatives that are happening with the F P R L. So, um, there is, uh, extended hours from six to nine, Monday to Thursday, and that's been very well received. Uh, comment, I'm so happy of how quickly you made my books and DVDs available so promptly, especially during the pandemic. Um, I won't go into the details of statistics, but those are also available. And just to say that there's been an exponential increase in the number of eBooks and downloadable audiobooks that have gone out. So that's really, um, quite a statement in terms of COVID and the degree to which the library has been very responsive and is actually getting a much more uptake. Um, and then just further to Family Day or the March break, whichever, you know, all of the above. There's lots of virtual programs going on and there's, uh, special guests. There's a coding system developed at MIT delivered through Zoom. And these programs allow kids to make their own computer games and animations. Uh, in addition to this, there's a hosting of a Science World Zoom event with amazing stream science demonstrations and a family Canadian trivia event. So there really is something for everybody. And of course, there's always the ever-popular virtual storytimes that are being presented as well as regular, uh, programming. And finally, as with baking, I don't know about the rest of you who did bread and other things during the pandemic when we're all in crisis and wondered what to do. But now we're looking at the gardening season coming up. So F P R L librarians have been working to create a new list of resources to support new gardeners. So that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. My baking has added fifteen pounds to me, so it's not working out too well. Counselor Ferguson?
Oh, yes, and I have to remind that Counselor Arnesson, when she's using the analogy that the, F P R L, the Fraser Valley Regional Library, because I was just about to do a report on the G B S and D D restriction within B C G G. But, uh, all, what that really means, it's the Greater Vancouver Regional District, a sewer and water district. Okay, so my report today is I'm pleased to announce that the Metro Vancubers could continue their advertising program. And this week, my announcement is, do not flush your pharmaceuticals down the toilet. Take them to your pharmacy and they will dispose of them. They're hard on the bugs and eat the sewage that comes through the system. And we like to keep our system clean. Uh, I'm thinking of putting together my own videos, Mr. Mayor, for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Richter?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I have a parks meeting on Wednesday. Uh, and, uh, as you and I both, uh, know, we went through the board's strategic retreat uh, at the end of February, and I just wanted to report back to council that the, um, strategic retreat, uh, focused in on two particular lenses, equity and reconciliation. And there will be changes coming to the board's strategic plan going forward that pay more attention, uh, to both of these matters as, uh, core values within the region. Um, I also had a question. I was wondering if, um, I could refer it to Counselor Arnesson to take forward to the Fraser Valley Regional Library meeting that she's got on Wednesday. In our items distributed today, uh, on page fifty, it refers to item number twenty-four uh, with regards to, uh, an incident that happened at the Walnut Grove Library.
Right, okay.
So I'm wondering if, um, she could take that forward and perhaps report back to us on how it's been resolved. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm happy to. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Richter. I, I knew you'd be, uh, reporting on the, uh, strategic planning and appreciate that, so I figured it, didn't wanna, I, I talked too much. I do want to say, uh, today was the opening day for registering for COVID vaccines. For those who are over ninety, and I actually got to try it out. I'm not over ninety yet, but my, uh, in-laws are. And, uh, I got online and it didn't take very long. Had them both, uh, uh, registered at times that they wanted. Uh, there were lots of times there in Abbotsford and there were lots of times available. So, uh, my sister-in-law was trying to get on my phone and that just wasn't working out. But the online was really easy. So if anybody has any, knows any folks that are ni- in ninety-plus this week, they can register and certainly encourage you to assist the elder, her elders in, uh, in getting online. There's several categories that can register. It's all online. Uh, Fraser Health, you can look it up. So thank you for that. And so with that, move on to, um, other business. And so Counselor Richter, you have other business.
Uh, yes, I have a motion, uh, there that I will move, but I need to amend the last one in discussions with Mr. Backen. Um, he's made it clear that we can't provide active traffic, uh, enforcement. We have to ask the R C M P to do so. So I would like to amend number five to read, request the R C M P to provide active trans, uh, traffic enforcement. So if.
So with that.
The motion could be amended to reflect, request the R C M P to provide.
Thank you. Your seconder? Counselor Kunst, seconds?
And I, I would just like to speak to this if I may, Mr. Mayor. Um, the residents of, uh, two sixteen street are extremely concerned about the volume of truck traffic that is, uh, going, uh, basically on an on-truck road, I guess, off of the interchange, the new two sixteen street interchange. But the problem is the, uh, elementary school that's right on that corner of, um, two sixteen street and eighty-eighth avenue, and the potential risks to the children at that school. Uh, so this particular motion comes from those residents in, on two sixteen street, asking that we have, uh, better signage posted. They've done a lot of research. Uh, they've got, uh, a model for truck signage that apparently comes from the NIMOL. Uh, that was recommended to them, uh, by the, um, Provincial Department of Transportation. And so the motion is really to, uh, address their concerns around, uh, signage and truck traffic on that part of two sixteen street north that is not a truck route. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, a couple of questions, um, for staff. I know when it comes to movement of goods, we do have to confer with other agencies, um, Translink and, and M O T I, I believe. And that, uh, it still resides within the, either the regulations of the motor vehicle act, I can't recall, it's been too long, that a truck um, is allowed to make its way to a truck route in the shortest possible route. So when, for example, a truck is on eighty-eighth and two sixteenth, which is a truck route, to go to, from eighth and two sixteenth to eighty in the freeway, that's the shortest route. Uh, so I, I don't know if we have, I mean, it's nice to ask them not to. I suppose we could do that, but I'm not sure the jurisdictional aspect of that. I don't think we can enforce it. I don't think we can stop them or prohibit them because it isn't, it isn't a superseding legislation. Uh, I don't know, Mr. Seffy can help explain a little bit about the legislation that goes around these sorts of things. Certainly, there's merit to this. To the people out there, but we also have to be aware of, uh, legislative requirements, um, ensuring that trucks do take the shortest route, which reduces greenhouse gases and reduces pollution, uh, and, uh, and, and are really our level of being able to enforce this. Mr. Seffy, do you have any comments?
Uh, just to confirm what you just said, Your Worship, I don't think there's anything to add. You've covered two points. Uh, regardless of the signage that may be requested of other levels of, of government, such as Translink, to approve the installation of, uh, the fact it means that, uh, local deliveries as well as, uh, trucks using a route as the shortest route to get to their destination is enshrined in, in the legislation and in, in such signage. And furthermore, the, uh, complications that may arise with enforcement, uh, trying to determine whether it's R C M P or, or any, any other branch of, including the government, such as motor vehicle safety enforcement, uh, the complications to do with verifying whether in fact somebody's destination, uh, is actually, uh, or rather the route that's being used is, is the shortest route for somebody's destination ultimately.
Thank you. Yeah, so to ensure, I know there's probably a lot of people watching this and will hear about it, so I'm sure there's no false expectations that we can, we can do all of these things, but we certainly, uh, you know, this passes, there's certain things that we can do that, that will assist, but enforcement's can be difficult. Uh, Counselor Ferguson?
Yeah, I think it's important to note that, uh, the folks living in this area by two sixteenth and exchange, uh, had some concerns when the exchange was actually being built. And, uh, I think what they wanted also see, you know, some safety measure, traffic measures. And, uh, I know they've annoyed, they've put some walls up there for the benefit of the residents and, uh, I have a quick question. Is that, I drive by that the odd time. I ask that same question as I, I usually go slow during the, the regulated, uh, speed during the, the school zone. Is that an actual regulated speeds, uh, zone in front of the, I guess, Echol, uh, Francois School there or on the, I guess, eighty-eighth and two sixteenth, if I may, through, to staff?
It, it would be, um, uh, a speed zone. Whether it's fifty or thirty, maybe staff can help out. I'm sure it's.
I think, Worship, as I recall, this was something that council, Eric, staff can install.
Um, okay, so what speed would it be? The thirty or the fifty, Mr. Safety?
Uh, I haven't done a check. I believe it was the fifty.
Yeah, con- yeah, council had asked for thirty in a school zone, and I believe staff were checking with.
Okay, so because that's important for the safety. As long as it continues. Because as Counselor Richter said, rightfully so, that the folks are concerned. Because as councillor Richter said, rightfully so, that the folks are concerned about the the schools, the children and also, you know, the. Speed, especially with trucks or any vehicle for that matter, but trucks. My next thing, question would be is that it is a no truck route. Do we have any say or power within our bylaws or otherwise? To let people know that are making deliveries in the area that it is a truck route, even though they have deliveries to be made in the area, if I may through. Chair to staff?
Mr. Seffy?
I apologize, Your Worship. I'm not sure I understand the question.
So I believe the truck.
Okay, so, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, truck routes are recorded, like the truckers have maps of what truck routes are in every municipality, so I think they would know where our truck routes are.
I guess a frustrate.
Not only municipalities have truck routes, Your Worship, but we do, we do have identified, we have identified truck routes in the township. And the maps are available, yes.
And my final point is just basically, Mr. Mayor, there's a lot of frustration. We've got a lot of emails, as you know. And we're gonna do our best on an ongoing basis. I'm sure myself and other members of council have been talking to the residents in the area. Expressing our concerns as well, but our hands are tied in a lot of areas, but that doesn't mean to say we can't keep. Active and aware of this particular issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Whitmarsh. Oh, sorry, Counsel Arneson, you're next.
Thank you, Worship, and I am supportive of this and I realize that there are constraints as to what exactly we can do. But I think oversight and due diligence is very helpful. I did have a question actually to the drafter, the mover of the motion. Because I know that in the past, and she's likely aware of this, councillor Richter. That there was some concern with the air brake noises that were being used and I wonder if that would be something that could. Be added as an amendment to this. It's not a safety issue. It's more having to do with just the noise factor of now trucks utilizing.
Absolutely, I'd be very supportive of adding that because it is a concern to the area residents as well.
So I could, I could add that as an amendment and I think the other one may potentially just be direction, but it occurred to me. Even though we wouldn't have a lot of authority to to monitor and get somebody to ticket. Anybody who's transgressing these rules, but I thought that the B C Truckers Association would be a good target. For advocacy and just to let them know that these directional signages were going to go up. And that they should let their their members know that this was a change that was being instituted in the area. I just thought it was something. That we could do that wouldn't cost us anything and it would be helpful just to broadcast the information. So that just might be simple direction.
So, Mr. Seffy, are there already signs up?
Clarify. Can I have a clarification?
Sure, I've got you in the speakers list, so that's okay. That's why I asked Mr. Seffy if there already are signs to limit air brake use. In residential areas. Quite often there are. I don't know if we have them up that that area already or should this be added?
In that particular area, Your Worship, I don't believe we have any, but again, we'll have to, I'll have to check.
So I think that could be added as a amendment, if this is unanimous consent.
I agree.
Okay, no one's disagreeing to that, so we'll add that. Staff look into that. Okay, councillor Whitmarsh and then Davis.
Yeah, thank you. Just a question through, Your Worship, to staff. On these items, particularly one, numbers one through to four. Are, which of these items are we currently in process of doing or already doing? And which of these four items would be new to any direction that staff has already been given from council?
Your Worship. I don't believe any of these signs are currently signs that staff has received previous direction from council on. To proceed. You may recall there was some discussion about other types of signage. That staff had referred to Translink. And Translink had responded by advising the township that they would like to evade the outcome of the. Second phase of the Two Sixteen Corridor Study.
Okay, all right, that's helpful. Thank you.
So Davis? Oh, sorry, I thought you were done. Go ahead.
Just again, for clarification, and I know it seems we've talked this over many times, number five asks us to. Request for traffic enforcement, however, my understanding is we're not allowed to enforce it because trucks are still allowed to be used to the route. If it's the shortest route to the freeway and so on, so I guess I'm. If that's the case, then I don't know what, how we can ask for enforcement when we can't actually enforce.
We can request. And one thing that can happen, I'd like to go through the speakers list, is that this could be referred to staff. To come back with, they are, there is a study being done. They are contemplating science and they may be very prescriptive and staff can come and interpret it. Bring it back to us with some recommendations. So that's something we can maybe think of doing.
Yeah, so I guess for me, like certainly the first four, I, you know, I'd support. I'm wondering if number five would be something that we could just refer that one to staff. And then pass number four, so vision might be in order.
Thanks. I'll go to counsel Davis.
Sorry, I just want a clarification. You talk about an air brake. Let's get, I just wonder. I think I know what everyone's talking about. Like it's an engine brake where the truck puts the engine brake on and it.
Engine brake, that's, you're right.
Because air brakes are on trucks and when you put it, when you make an air brake application at a stop sign, you let it off, it'll go. Okay, so yeah, I just wanted to make sure we got the right thing down there.
You got, you got it. It should be the, you're correct. It should be the engine retarder brake or.
Engine.
We call them jig brakes.
Jig brake.
Yeah, but staff.
Jig brake.
I guess that was a brand. I don't know. It's been called the jig brake for a long time. So speakers, I throw this out to council. There's a lot of here. It's very prescriptive and I really would like to hear from staff. Because there are some good ideas in here, but have them come back from staff, things that they're already contemplating, how this would work. And so a motion to refer to staff to report back on these suggestions and what they're already doing.
I'll make a motion, but can we, is there any chance we can make it very timely?
Yes, yeah, Mr. Seffy, I'll ask you. Thank you.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
So move by counsel Davis and second by counsel Long to refer this to staff to provide further information. Counsel Richter.
Yeah, no, I don't support a referral to staff. I think the public and the residents that live in that area have been very vocal. And very concerned for a long period of time now. And all of their fears are being realized now. I think it's time for us to take action. On what is happening and stop it from happening. So no, I don't support a referral to staff. I think this just needs to get done. And they were very clear in the emails that they sent to us in February about what they wanted to happen up there. And this motion reflects their desires. It's their community. They live there on a day-to-day basis. I think we need to respect them and what their wishes are, so I'm not going to support a referral. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Ferguson.
I'm beginning to wonder if if we need a referral. The motion says that staff undertake the following. But if I may through the chair to staff, we've gone through a lot of these with a lot more proposed for the future. Is that not correct? If I may through the chair to staff?
Mr. Seffy?
Your Worship, again, if I understand the question correctly, yes, there have been a number of. Improvements, a number of requests from area residents. That have gone through the process of either technical verification by staff to make sure that it meets the appropriate. Warrants, standards and criteria, or otherwise referred to the appropriate authority, in this case Translink. Or consideration of approval, as well as discussions with management of transportation for certain aspects. So yes, the discussions have been ongoing since the introduction or the announcement, I should say, of the interchange.
So I guess my point is, Mr. Mayor, I mean, if we said something that was untoward or not something we could do, like plant. Seven hundred foot signs up by council, I mean, some things we can't do. Staff would just say, look, we can't do these. And but they proceed as to, as if it was a referral regardless. So I just see his thing. The statement is therefore be resolved, count, ask staff to undertake the following, you know, so. Some, most of these things have already been done, but there's an improvement and plus we're going to be asking the R C M P and other agencies, so. I don't know. I don't see a referral as being any different than the motion itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Woodward.
Yeah, thanks. I'm going to admit I'm a bit of a disadvantage here. I mean, I know this has been going on prior to the last election, so I've. Haven't really been following every detail from the first day that this started around approval of the interchange and then. The the motion just before the last election. So I might need a referral here as well, especially on the N I M O model. I don't really know what that is and I think it's appropriate to hear from our transportation staff on it. But I'm definitely coming to the point of pretty significant frustration that this one doesn't seem to get resolved, so. I'd like to know how to resolve it, because maybe I'm just going to go put up all the signs and then make Translink come by and take it down. Because I would rather just do that and have Translink put in writing to us to take them down for various reasons. And seemingly chasing approvals that never come, which residents tell me come everywhere else. So I'm definitely going to label myself confused on this one, three levels of government, not been around for every motion and every discussion. Lots of policy things for me to work on and maybe I got to start working on this one too, because I don't really understand why this goes on for years. And maybe, maybe we can have something in the staff report that explains why it goes on for years. Because I think it'd be helpful to know, to know why that is and if we keep having suggestions coming forward. That never seem to go anywhere. I just need to know why they don't go anywhere. And if that information has been sent to me, I apologize. I found this one to be. One of the more complex regulatory issues, which to me seems pretty simple. It's not a truck route, but trucks are allowed to use it. So then if I can, if I'm summarizing, it's not a truck route, but trucks are allowed to use it. Which I find confusing as well. So I've also drove, drive through there quite often, so some of the other residents put in an email to us. That they really appreciate the extra access that the interchange provides, but are concerned about that interface to the school and it put me in that camp. I mean, I like the access, I use it and I think it's necessary, but. I do not, I mean, I drive through there and it doesn't seem like an appropriate exit from a major interchange. For the long term. Now, it's not something that we can solve in a year or maybe two years. But I'd also like to start finding out, is there a long-term solution to that interface to that school at that intersection? And see what that looks like, because that's what I consider to be the real solution to this, not a few signs, which may be an interim step. But ideally, what is that long-term plan? Is there one that's even possible? What would that look like? And then maybe we can be on a path to solving this for the long term. So I won't add that to this particular motion. But, you know, I understand and respect the mover doesn't support a referral, but I feel like I might need one here. To get yet again another sort of summary on, on and why we're always back at this point. Looking for what seems to be very reasonable signage to me, but for some reason we're not allowed to install it. Thanks.
Thank you. Counsel Davis.
Yeah, I absolutely understand their frustration. This has been going on for a long time, but I'm concerned that I don't know the legal aspects of it. I know in front of the school, they've narrowed that down, so where you, especially south of the school. On Eighty-Eighth and every time I drive by there, I drive by there daily and every time I drive over across there. I think, boy, I'm sure glad there's a fence there, but kids can climb fences and all sorts of things. But I'm, I'm concerned that these signs, because if I'm in a truck. And you know what, I'm probably going to get beat up by kind of defying this a little bit, but councillor Woodward said, well, let's go. Get some signs and put them up. But once, you know, is the township going to put these signs up and then be liable? And that's what I'm concerned. I, I, I see no, like, you know, on the south side of the interchange. It's unbelievable, the traffic on our road. It's, I under, I don't have, I tell my kids, don't even go for a walk down to the Haffer Barn, like it's. It's unbelievable how much more traffic and this is what happens. So what I'm concerned about is doing something that we shouldn't, like that's what I'm concerned about. Is, is the township going to come back? Is our staff going to come back and say, hey, we're not legally allowed to do this? So then council says, no, we're going to do it anyhow, because. The people, certain people want it. And I'm, I'm just concerned that when I get there in my truck, if I have, I have a truck, I'm not a trucker, but if I get there in my truck. And I pull up to Eighty-Eighth and I look and it says. Directional sign is showing an arrow going straight with exceptional. And I'm just worried that putting signs there are maybe the wrong spot. Putting signs out on the, on the off-ramp so that trucks don't get there would be a better. But now you're finding something totally different and I know that's, they've, they've gone through that fight, but. If I'm driving a truck and I get in that situation and all of a sudden they say, well, I can't turn left there and I can't turn left there. Oh, boy, I'm in a bad spot. I'm not supposed to be here. Well, I have to go somewhere. I can't back up and. Anyhow, so I guess where I'm going is, you know, we can put signs up and, but it, I'd really be nice. Just to get in a, in a very timely fashion, whether we're legally allowed or not legally allowed to. So that when council makes that decision, we know what we can be looking for in the future. If something happens. Thanks.
Counsel Long?
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. Yeah, it's a very complex motion here, so. If we want staff to do something, I think staff have to have some buy-in into it. So that's why I would support a short referral. I would imagine it could come back. I would hope at the next meeting in a couple of weeks, because the concern I see is that we're raising expectations by passing this without staff's cooperation. And the mechanics of how these things can be applied. If we pass them, everyone's going to think, hey, it's all done. The fact is, if you read all these emails that we've been getting. The resolution they want is that they want trucks off the road. They don't want any trucks there. Well, that's just unfortunately not going to happen. So if there's a safety issue by the school, I don't see that in this motion, but if there's, maybe we need to have. Crossing, you know, crossing guards or people looking for people, for trucks that are speeding. Or enforcement at the school, if there's a concern about danger and there's multiple concerns, but the number one theme that I see from all these letters and all of these concerns. And all these discussions I've had with many of the residents there, they don't want the trucks there, period. Well, I'm afraid that that's passed. That's way in the past. So if we're going to do something constructive and we're going to provide some expectations to the public, staff have to give us the correct recommendations. And so by referring this to staff for them to come back with a detailed report on what can and can't be done. And even if, even if they say it can't be done, at least we'll know what it is that we're supposed to be asking for. And then we can, then Eric and I can go down and put these signs up, but I think it'd be wise to get staff to author a report that explains. What is happening down there and what we can realistically do so that we don't raise expectations that cannot be delivered.
Thank you. Counsel Whitmarsh.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I would like us to, as a council, to do everything we can to make that area as safe as we, as we are able to do. And so, you know, I, I think the suggestions in here around different signage seems good to me on, at the outside. But I don't know all the rules and regulations and whether we can do all those things, so. For me, a couple of weeks, maybe, I don't know if we can have this back by the, in two weeks at the next meeting where we could have. Some more information from staff on what are these things, what are the items that are listed, which ones we can, can do and can't do. No, I'm okay with that couple of weeks. I think we need to move quite quickly. As I said, I, the first four don't really concern me. The fifth one about enforcement, I'm just not sure how we do that when. We actually says you can't actually enforce that, so. But I, I'm happy to go with this to bring it to staff in a referral, but I think it should come back quickly and I would support that.
Thank you. Counsel Kuntz?
Yeah, initially I wasn't actually going to support a referral, but now after hearing, you know, all the concerns around the legalities of the signs. Yeah, I feel like that's probably. Um, yeah, I feel like that's probably the best route to go as long as it doesn't take too long. Um, as far as, I mean, we can request, um, the, that, the RCMP, but we're, is there, there's no way. That we can actually force the RCMP to do, um, monitoring, is that, would that be direct through your worship to staff?
They, I, I can just say that RCP are very receptive to our requests when we feel there's enforcement needed in certain areas, uh, we see there's an issue. They also target high accident areas, they're very, um, proactive that way, they don't want to just go out where there's no issues and, and write tickets to people or. You know, they, or they, they really target the high accident areas, high concern areas, and if this is one of them, they certainly would, and so they, they do take our suggestions seriously. And I know when I've called the superintendent, uh, they've been very receptive to, to, uh, concerns brought forward.
Right.
Higher residents, and they'll go out and they'll do what they can if there's, you know.
Well, I, I think, like most of us, if, if, if we know that there is a, a certain area that we're not supposed to go, and I know truck drivers are. You know, um, I think if we can even lessen the amount of trucks that go down that road is, you know, would be better than, than nothing, so. Um, you know, we've got to start somewhere, so let's, you know, see where this goes, but, so I would support a referral, um. If we can get that information, uh, in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you, all right, I'll call the question, uh, all those in favor and opposed.
I'm opposed.
Counsel Richard, Counsel Arneson, Counsel Ferguson opposed, that passes for, uh, any other business?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, okay, um, Counsel Whitmarsh, and Counsel Kunst, your hands are still up, is that for other business?
Well, sorry.
Counsel, Counsel Richter, go ahead.
Okay, um, I'd like to move a referral of the Brian Miller delegation to staff for a report.
I'll second that, Ferguson.
Okay, moving seconded, Council on on that.
Yeah, okay, so it's move for report, I, I think I'm happy with that, but, uh, there was an awful lot of, uh, stuff in his presentation, but I, I'm glad that we're not going to. Enact them immediately.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've got lots of initiatives that are already underway, why they're not working for the, for Mr. Miller or others, that's the question we need to ask.
So, so I believe this would be, yeah, this would be to refer to staff.
Further delegation.
Address the concerns of the delegation to report back, because he did raise some concerns and it may be working fine and not wherever it are, made some tweaking, so, great, thanks, uh, Counsel Ferguson.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, Mr., uh, to staff, if there's any chance they can, uh, uh, contact, uh, Mr., uh, Miller. And, uh, the, adopt the program and just indicate, uh, how it works. Because it appeared as if they weren't responding, if, if there's any chance, I think I have his, um, if, if staff doesn't have, I have his cell number if they want it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, yeah, staff's in that direction, uh, Counsel Richter, do you want to speak more to this or just call the question? Okay, I'll, you're muted, you're muted. Counsel Richter, there you go.
I, I just wanted to say.
Sign of the times, muted, yeah.
I, I have other items that I want to bring up under other business.
Okay, I'll call the question on the referral, uh, all those in favor, opposed, carried, thank you, Counsel Richter, go ahead.
Okay, um, in the items distributed that came to us on March the fourth. Uh, item number four with regards to the, uh, uh, the Salishan Place by the river in Fort Langley. It, it talks about getting a potential corporate sponsorship and. Out of respect for our, uh, very good relationship that we have with. The First Nation in Fort Langley, the Quatlin, is this something that they would be okay with? Or is this something we should maybe put on hold and consult with them about?
So, I'll refer to staff, but I know that there are more than one First Nations that we're working with, uh, at Salishan Place. We've engaged with the Masque First Nation and, uh, I know Mr. Tino will probably speak more to it, but we have had that discussion, so. Everything we're doing, we're working in concert with the First Nations, but Mr. Backen, if you'd like to comment on this particular one.
That's correct, your worship, anything that we do decide to do would involve further consultation, I guess at this point the question would be. Is there any interest before we engage in consultation about a sponsor if there is no potential sponsor, so. I, I think the point is well taken, once we have a, a level of understanding of the interest, then more work would be done both with council. And the First Nations to make sure that it's an appropriate, uh, and, uh, and significant recognition of it, one that's tastefully and appropriately done.
Yeah, well, my concern is, of course, that, that this new museum is going to be very much. Uh, remembrance and a reflection of their people and their history. And I don't know how they'd feel about a corporate sponsorship on it, I just, to me, I think we should be asking them first.
Your worship, it might help that the scope and scale is not so much naming of the facility, but various parts of the facility such as meeting rooms or. Or elements of it, again, that would be consistent with the overall piece, I, I don't think we would want to be looking at a, um, a sponsorship of the, of the name of the facility. About various components of it.
Okay, um, item number fifteen on page thirty three and thirty four. There's a letter with regards to the Fort Langley Museum Development. And I'm querying whether we need to have some sort of a, uh, public input opportunity. I know we can't have a public input meeting, but maybe an opportunity for people to raise their concerns. Around parking and density on this.
Backen.
Uh, thank you, your worship, there was some historical consultation done, of course, that was pre-COVID, and through the process that we're going forward with. There will be a rezoning that's necessary, and I think what you're seeing is, uh, some of the attempts with the limited, uh, appropriate COVID, um. Uh, circumstance in terms of trying to get that input, so council will have the ability to consider it further. Uh, once the application is actually in and then we've actually presented it to council and through that process. It's quite likely, uh, given the timeline, that the, uh, the COVID situation will be significantly different. Before it actually, uh, gets to the public input stage for council.
Okay, as long as there's going to be opportunity, uh, for resident issues to be addressed. I think that's what my concern is.
Your worship, in addition to what Mr. Backen just referenced, maybe I can just share with council that the proponent has actually proceeded to do some. Some, uh, committee consultation, uh, and, and that is in fact why there is communication to council. That arising from that communication that the proponent is doing and some online, uh. Public information meetings on their own initiative.
Okay, item number sixteen on page thirty five, I'm wondering if we could refer this to Metro. Because Derby Reach is a metro park.
Sure, I think, but, Draxion will forward this on to Metro Vancouver.
Yeah, good, okay.
You're on the Parks Committee.
Yeah, I know, and I will raise it definitely on, uh, on Wednesday, but it, it, it always has more. Um, it's the word forced, if it comes from the council as a whole. And, uh, and so I would request that, um, item number eighteen on page thirty seven. And, and we keep getting these comments from residents because Tellus keeps giving residents the wrong information. Can we do something about this, like, could we run a statement in, on our township page in the Langley Times saying? I don't know, don't listen to what Tellus is telling you because they're not giving you the right information, uh.
Yeah, we, we do, everyone that comes in gets responded to, basically given the right information, and I, I hear you, we're getting this all the time, we're al- also have had. I believe staff have had conversations with Tellus to tell their folks not to say this, because we are, as, as you say, it's untrue, so. I don't know if on the township page we put something out, but then we're going on to Tellus's world and promoting their brand, when other brands are. Also doing this, I, I don't know, Mr. Backen.
Can we not just do a generic statement around fiber optics, yeah?
Just on the process.
Don't have to aim at Tellus, but.
Mr. Backen, is that something we could just add on the township page, just a little, uh, note?
No, we certainly could, your worship, I'm sure it would get a bit of a reply from, from the, uh, phone or some, from Tellus themselves. But we could certainly explore that and, uh, uh, and try to figure out the appropriate commentary, so it's, uh, a, a signpost for all to see in terms of what's. From what our perspective is going on.
Yeah, because it's unfair that they're, they're making these statements to our residents who think we're the problem here and we're not. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, I don't know if we're going to do that on the page, but I mean, it is, it's coming to an end, I think fiber is going to be everywhere very soon. And don't forget, there are other providers besides Tellus on the fiber bandwagon, so I don't know if putting something on the, on, on the website is going to help. Or inflame the issue.
Yeah, staff will look into it, thanks.
Okay, item number nineteen, uh, with regards to burning, I just had a question, when burning season will be this spring? Or if it's going to be canceled, um, if it's not going to be canceled, are we going to put, uh, notice on the township page? With regards to, uh, when people can burn and how to get their burning permits?
Chief, Chief Campbell, are you there and you can provide the dates for the, the burning permits?
Yeah, thanks for, the dates will be, uh, posted shortly, um, if they're not already today.
Oh, good, okay.
When do you expect it to be, just curious?
Um, I don't have that in front of me, sorry, I don't want to do the wrong dates, but I.
You weren't expecting a burning question, okay, okay, item number twenty two on page forty five. With regards to, um, the sidewalks in Brookswood, could, could council get an update on this? This is actually quite alarming, um, from a liability perspective, I think. Can we get an update on it?
Sorry, which one is that?
Oh, the lady who fell in Brookswood because repairs to the sidewalk are needed.
Sure, staff.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is not good, that sidewalk should be fixed ASAP.
Staff can look into it.
Okay.
They reported, it was reported to Engineering Division, so.
Yeah, o- okay, but can, can council get an update on it, because I, I think that if it's causing these kinds of injuries. It needs to get fixed immediately. And then finally, with respect to, uh, the Metro report, item number thirty, the board in brief. And I just wanted to bring this to council's attention, I know that I did bring it to our Township Parks and Rec Committee. But, um, Metro has done a really amazing report on the state of the parks a- a- assets. And what they've done is they've put a value, um, not only on the infrastructure in the parks. But also the natural value of the parks, and I'm thinking that township, uh, we should be looking at doing. This for our own parks and, uh, and maybe this is something staff could, uh, put on. I, I know they're all loaded up now with their priorities for the next year, but maybe this is something that could go on their back burner. Uh, forgetting more detail about, and, uh, if they wanted to do so, just even getting their hands on that Metro. Uh, state of the assets, um, report that was done for Metro Parks could provide a framework. That we could use for our parks.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, okay, uh, staff got that, so Counsel Kunst.
Yeah, um, so I guess this is on the, um, sidewalk or it's, I think it's a road in Brookswood that is under, needs to be repaired. Uh, there's a, there's a path if we're going to go down this road, there's a, there's a pathway, and I know I've brought this up before. Um, my neighbor who is in a wheelchair and would, loves to go down this one little pathway between, um. Um, on forty fourth and forty third, and it's very ruddy and there's lots of, um, bumps. And he now can't use that and neither can any of his other friends, um, so if that one could be looked at as well, so, um.
Okay, staff have that note, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, see any other business, so we'll move on to a motion to resolve and special closed, kind of a motion please. Move by Counsel Davis, second by Counsel Whitmarsh, and I have Counsel Arneson.
Uh, thank you, worship, yes, I have an agenda item under legal.
Legal, okay, thank you, anybody else? Okay, I will.
Yes, your worship, uh, personnel item, please.
Personnel, okay.
Personnel.
Okay, without a call, is there any on table items? Nope, so the agenda.
Yeah, yes, there's, um, special, yeah, items distributed to council, Mr. Mayor.
I don't believe, no, there isn't, not for closed, thanks, okay, I will call.
Sure, close, yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I may, well, well, Ferguson.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
Items distributed to council, special close for February the eighth, twenty twenty one, there are four items.
This is March the eighth, you, you're looking at the wrong one.
Oh, okay, sorry.
That's okay, uh, call the question, all those in favor, opposed, carried, thank you, and, uh, motion to terminate.
Termination.
Counsel Davis and Counsel Whitmarsh seconds, all those in favor, opposed, carried, uh, it's five minutes, good, take a break, come back in five, get your coffees.
Thank you.
Thank you.